...an attack on democracy.
Look, there's no place in America for this kind of violence. It's sick. It's sick.
President Biden made it very clear in a couple of appearances over the weekend that he condemned the violence.
We cannot allow for this to be happening. We cannot be like this. We cannot condone this.
And said that this kind of reaction, regardless of your political stance, was completely unacceptable. Republicans had a wider range of reactions. There were some in the party who took a measured approach.
Everyone needs to turn the rhetoric down.
Like from Speaker of the House Mike Johnson.
You have political opposition and political opponents, but we're all Americans and we have to treat one another with dignity and respect.
But you also heard some Republicans taking a far different approach. You had people like Mike Collins, a kind of a firebrand Republican from Georgia, writing on social media that Joe Biden sent the orders to shoot Donald Trump.
Wow.
Obviously, there's no evidence for that. And you had Lauren Boebert from Colorado in a television interview saying Joe Biden is responsible for the shooting, essentially saying that it was Democratic rhetoric that caused this. Again, there's been no evidence whatsoever yet that the shooter was motivated by that kind of rhetoric. But that was a common Republican talking point that you saw emerging. To say that using all of this description of Trump as an existential threat to democracy had somehow whipped up people to enact violent acts.
Okay, so there are some cross-currents of rhetoric here in the aftermath of the shooting. And we see some signs of unity, but it seems undeniable that this is a very fraught political moment. What happens now? The Republican National Convention is starting on Monday. Do we have any idea of how that event will play out, given what just happened? How this changes things?
Well, first and foremost, I think you're going to see a level of security at both conventions that's unprecedented. In terms of the political impact, that's a little harder to predict. This presents Donald Trump with an enormous opportunity to reset his image. But it's an entirely unpredictable political environment, and the situation could change. I think its greatest meaning, its most resonant meaning, is that our politics is changing and moving into a darker and more dangerous place. And the question is, are we entering an age where political violence becomes commonplace? Or is this a moment where we realize collectively that this is not the future we can accept?
And what happens in the next few days is going to be quite important to help give an answer to that.
Indeed.
Glenn, thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Mills is a photographer for The New York Times. Glenn Thrush is a Washington reporter.
The Daily is supported by C3 Generative AI. C3 Generative AI enables rapid access to secure, traceable hallucination-free insights from enterprise systems, all while using any LLM, helping enterprises turn the invisible into the obvious. Learn more at c3.ai. Innovative, immersive, and skillfully investigated, The Daily brings listeners today's stories as only...
The 7:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order. Hello, can you hear me?
They're on now. Yeah, they're on now.
They're on what?
The mics weren't on, but they're on now.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. All right, the 7 o'clock session of Roanoke City Council for July 15th is hereby called to order, and I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Cece Webb, to please call a roll.
Ms. Whiteboyd.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here, and a quorum is present.
Tonight, the invocation will be delivered by the Reverend Dr. Amy Harg, pastor of the Mount Zion AME Church. And following Pastor Harg, I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. Let me invite Pastor Harg, and let me just say, congratulations for Pastor Dr. Harg. She has the chime. You all may have seen the article in The Times a few weeks ago. Thank you for playing that solid music out in northwest Roanoke. Thank you for your commitment to do what you can do and do your part, so we appreciate that.
Good evening, Mayor Sherman Lee and the members of the Roanoke City Council. Let us pray. Almighty God, source of wisdom and justice, we gather tonight in this esteemed chamber led by our esteemed Mayor Sherman Lee and the dedicated members of the Roanoke City Council alongside our interim city manager, Dr. Patton. We come before you humbled by the responsibility entrusted to us and mindful of the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead for our city. We implore your divine presence to fill this room, guiding our thoughts and illuminating the paths toward solutions. Grant each member of this council the wisdom of Solomon, the courage of David, the tenacity of Deborah, and the unwavering commitment to justice that you embody. Our hearts ache for the violence that has plagued our communities. We lift a prayer for peace, Lord. We pray for a decrease in crime, for a softening of hearts, and for a renewed sense of respect and understanding among all citizens. May the weapons of violence be laid down, replaced by instruments of peace and reconciliation. Bestow upon us your children the peace of God, which surpasses all human comprehension. Let this peace be a shield against negativity, a guiding light in moments of uncertainty, and a wellspring of strength in the face of adversity. May your blessings be upon Mayor Lee, the city council, Dr. Patton, and us as they navigate the complexities of leadership. Grant them the discernment to make decisions that not only uphold the law, but also foster compassion, inclusivity, and a brighter future for all the residents of Roanoke in the matchless, marvelous, miraculous name of your son and our Savior we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Thank you, Dr. Harg. At this time, we're going to certify a closed meeting, and I've asked Councilwoman Trish Whiteboyd to please make the motion.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certify to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. Just a moment.
Yes, if I could, before we get started, I just wanted to do their questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the 2 o'clock session, Councilmember Whiteboyd had asked if I could have a moment during the 7 o'clock session to report on a couple of items that was part of the annual report for the Roanoke Redevelopment Housing Authority. And at this time, I would like to present, if I could have a couple of minutes, I'll just do that. With regards to the Old Spanish Trail, it's 86 units, which is going to be on the half-site. And this site is located at Peters Creek and Shenandoah. The other half will be used for future housing. They have mentioned that they have hired a development consultant to help them with the HUD process and a low-income housing tax credit application. They have also hired a design firm out of Lynchburg that is currently working on concepts, site planning, et cetera. The units will be affordable, meaning very low and extremely low-income residents, financed with low-income historic tax credits and project-based vouchers, Section 8. And they're also going to be requesting CDBG and home funds from the city. And they want to be working with the city and applying for the Home Safe Grant. They have selected, but still need to put in a full application. This will be for nine units that will be reserved for homeless applicants that will be referred through the city's continuum of care system. And then with regards to the South Jefferson Street corridor, it will be serving as the central artery extending the urban pattern of downtown and is anchored by the St. Andrews Compound and Roanoke Memorial Hospital. The commissioners approved an amendment to the design guidelines this past June. Updates does not have to go before council. The amendment takes away the 90-foot height restriction on Reserve Avenue. And Corrillion requested the change when they submitted their council center plan for the housing authority's review. The housing authority reviewed it. The building will be taller than 90 feet, and it is comparable with the district it was in the Roanoke Times just this past week. And they believe they have submitted a site, Corrillion has submitted a site plan to the city. Thank you for doing that. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'm pleased to recognize the interim city manager to introduce the next presentation.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. We have Mr. We have Davenport's representative here to present to us on the capital funding approach and timetable for the Roanoke Valley Juvenile Detention Center.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can you all hear me?
Amen.
Okay. With me tonight is Brian Henry. And Brian is the superintendent, executive director, if you would, of the Regional Juvenile Detention Center, as well as behind us, James Yancey, who is finance director, right there. And then to right behind me, to right there, is Brian Carter. You may recognize Brian as the deputy county manager in Franklin County that also serves as the chairman for basically this facility, a detention center that you all have been a part of for many, many years. Brian and I, tonight, were thinking we would just quickly go through the purpose of why we're here. I, again, as your financial advisor on behalf of Davenport, we are basically wanting to give you an update on where things stand as it relates to some critical needs that are necessary. And again, Brian, we'll talk about that. But if we could, just, let's see, this will work for me? Is that okay? A little bit of background, again, I don't have to belabor, you know me. I've been in front of you now for a number of years and serve as your independent advisor, and we do the same thing for the commission. So, let's see, that someone else is doing it? Oh, there it is. Okay. So, we have some requirements and some needs. I'm going to ask Brian to touch on those, if he could, so you can see why we're here.
Good evening. So, the original building that we are currently housed in was built in 1999. And so, obviously, being 2024, all the equipment is starting to get past its usable life. HVAC is now 25 years old. The roof is now 25 years old, which is why we are at the point where we are now. So, we have just upgraded our security system, which has been completed. And so, that is one of the major tasks that we had to undertake. The next project would be an HVAC replacement, which you can see up there is estimated at a $2 million project. And then after the HVAC is completed, we will go to the roofing project, and that is approximately $1.5 million. So, the reason that these are updated is they're just past their usable life. This is just routine maintenance that needs to be updated to bring it into today's technology.
Any questions while Brian is here in terms of just the purposes? Again, their essential function, again, we are not engineers, but I think you said one of these systems just went on the fritz.
Correct. We have four HVAC units, and of one of the units, one of the compressors went out. So, we're hoping to hold on to that one, one of the two compressors until we hopefully will get the full replacement. But in the meantime, we are holding steady, so kind of a patchwork system as we got right now.
Brian, it's good to see you. You just asked a question. Do you house juveniles for the region or just Roanoke? Because that...
So, it's for the region. So, Roanoke City, Roanoke County, Salem, Franklin County, and Bodatuck County.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, I think, Mayor, you've asked a very good question because that leads into how is it going to be paid for and when and what have you. So, what's happened here is this has been a well-run detention center commission, if you would, for many years. And having said that, basically, it's depending upon the number of folks that are in there relative to the overall population, and that changes from year to year. I was asking Brian, this particular year, you're around 35% of it. You know, you've been higher, you've been lower. It just depends on the given year. That said, though, importantly, we are moving forward, and ultimately, we'll be coming back to you for formal approval of a loan of up to roughly $4 million. And by the way, if that money is greater than the actual we need, that money will be used to pay down the debt. That's how that works. So, we'll be very efficient that way. But that said, as we speak right now, we are doing what we call a dual-track approach. And that dual-track approach is we have been talking to local, regional, national banks, and we're also been talking to the Virginia Resource Authority, which is a state program. They have already said that they are comfortable with the commission going through them, if you would. But that will require us to come back to you in basically several weeks. And we've got a little schedule here for all the various local governments that have to come through. For the coming year, the '25 fiscal year, I say coming, it's already here, excuse me, already. It's July 20th or thereabouts. Hard to believe. So, there is no budgetary impact to the city of Roanoke or any of the entities in this budgetary year that you are now in. What will happen is, in the '26 fiscal year, there will be a known amount roughly based upon this debt service. And so, then all the local governments will, in effect, chip in as part of their existing service agreement, because those numbers change from year to year. So, we will be back in plenty of time when that does occur for the '26 budget. So, I just want to point that out. So, there's no surprises for you here in the '25 year that we happen to be here. So, with that said, there is a timetable. As I said, right now, we are already in the process of getting back some bank bids. This was done back in April. Those bids are actually coming back tomorrow. We're not overly excited. We think VRA may be better. But if we happen to get a very strong bid, then wonderful. We'll be the happiest to tell you. But nevertheless, we are looking at borrowing this money, no matter what, through VRA, and that should close in and around early November. So, have the money in hand, and those monies will be immediately reinvested through the state, state programs, so we'll be very efficient on that. And then, as the money is necessary for the two projects, Brian and James will be drawing them down from the state program, and that's how it'll work. The actual final maturity, how many years we pay this back, will be also determined. It's one of those things we've asked for different rates and times. So, again, based upon their overall thinking budgetary-wise, we're going to be flexible on that. What we will, though, do is recommend that the rates will be fixed rates. That's our goal and objective. Because overall, for the world that we are in, when I say "we," meaning local governments, commissions, authorities, we're able to borrow on a tax-exempt basis, which you and I, as individuals, can't. So, the interest rates are actually very favorable and still are. People don't always realize that for local governments. So, we see that rates being 5% fixed rate or lower, whereas if we're fortunate to get a mortgage these days, it seems like it's a solid 7% or higher. So, we're in a good mode. One of the other things we're going to try to do is be able to, if possible, depending on how many years we go out, maybe even have some refinancing opportunities. But to be continued. That's really all we're going to say for that tonight. Am I missing anything? Okay. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. Based on your timeline, it said close on direct bank loan, late June, early July. Has that changed?
This is the old schedule from April. We wanted you to see what was presented back in April. Everything got sort of varsity shifted about a month, so we moved it back.
So, you're still on target?
We're still on target because, basically, we wanted to know and have it, any bids we might get back prior to moving forward possibly with VRA. VRA application is not due in till about August 2nd to 8th.
August 2nd is what you have.
Yes, right. And they've moved it back a little then for everyone. So, there's about the 8th of August they want people's applications in. And then, again, we won't, they won't sell the bonds. They do it in a pool, and we've been in it before, we, the city. And they'll do that typically in about mid-October.
And so, when did you say you would come back? I'm sorry, you did say it, but September.
So, we'll come back in September. Yes. That's, yes.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Do you normally find that funding the VRA ends up being approved? Or do they have a lot of applications and they can't do them all?
That's a great question. They really make every effort to do them all. But that doesn't mean they approve them all. Not because, if they get large enough, they've sometimes moved to three times a year in terms of doing things. But they're very specific. They have to like what we call the credit quality and have to feel good about it. And they've already told our folks, all of us collectively, that they are comfortable with the credit quality.
That's always good when you're going for a loan.
Absolutely. We got it. We got it. So, that's, so we know, we know that we are going to be able to go through the VRA. So, but we just have to get individual approvals to do that. All right. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Are you able to speculate at all right now what an estimate on what the budget impact might be for us? Is it too early?
I kind of hesitate to do that for the moment. But think about it, again, because, counsel, how many years ultimately we borrow and pay it back. But at the same time, we can, you know, we can give a sense of that, again, for '26 and beyond. Because as Brian has indicated, yours, everyone's fluctuates from year to year. But we can certainly get that in September. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I know you got a tough job out there. I know that.
Yes, sir.
My background being in correction, so I understand. Okay.
You're welcome. Come on down anytime you'd like.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Patton. And we'll move on now to public hearings. Item number 15 on the agenda is public hearings. Item number 1, 15-1, is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to authorize FY 2025 bond anticipation note and line of credit issuance and appropriation for capital improvement plans project funding. There's a resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of the program?
A resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $94,22,405 aggregate principal amount of general obligations of the city of Roanoke, Virginia in the form of general obligation public improvement bonds of the city for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, improvement, extension, enlargement, and equipping of various public improvement projects of and for the city, including related design and architectural and engineering services, and to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city, fixing the form, denomination, and certain other details of such bonds, and otherwise providing with respect to the issuance, sale, and delivery of such bonds and the refunding of the refunded bonds, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of a like principal amount of general obligation public improvement bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance and sale of such bonds.
Good work.
Okay. Thank you. I want to recognize our interim city manager, Dr. Patton, for any comments you may have on this.
I would call on Mrs. Trent along with Davenport for any comments that need to be made. Mrs. Trent is our interim finance director.
Good evening. This public hearing is related to a reauthorization of bonds approval that we had for last year. It is also this year's capital improvement plan. It was our desire to ease the thought process on what we were reauthorizing and going forward. What you'll see in the council report is actually the list of projects that we have going forward. And in some cases, we don't anticipate issuing the full amount. We want to use or have the best utilization of our money with regards to potentially a bond anticipation note in advance of. And we've basically been depending on Davenport to assist us to make sure that we're utilizing money in the best fashion possible.
All right.
Again, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions of you and council.
Thank you. With that being said, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this issue?
No.
All right. Well, I'm going to close the public hearing there and ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments or discussions or questions.
I just have one quick question, Mayor, and it's probably an easy answer. But we have purposes listed for the bands. Can you deviate from that in case there's another purpose? Or you have to go solely on what's in this resolution?
That's a great question, Councilwoman Whiteboyd. The way it's set up is somewhat flexible, and it's purposely set that way. But you have, as you know, in your multi-year capital improvement program that you approved back when you did the '25 budget that we're in now. It's set up in such a way that it's really a variety of the projects for multiple years. So, if one of those are really not incorporated, if there's something totally outside that spectrum, if you would, what you could do is have a public hearing of council, and you could incorporate, let's say, whatever that project is.
Yeah, because I had something in mind, so I'm just wondering what the process is.
So, it's set up that way that you could, if the public hearing occurred, and you could, in effect, change out a project. What Ms. Trent was also alluding to is we are going to, and we've just done this as we speak shortly, putting out bids for banks to give us what we call this either bond anticipation note, line of credit. It's a nice way of saying we're going to take in dollars. That could go for a variety of projects. But we're basically doing it in more of a just-in-time, efficient way so that we're not going to be sitting with money that we don't earn interest on.
Sure.
And because the city, as I said earlier, has a good credit rating and is highly desirable... And because the city, as I said earlier, has a good credit rating and is highly desirable, we think those rates will be lower than the rates that we could have our money sitting on. So, we've got a good situation.
Okay.
But, to your answer, we could, if that's the wish of council, move and move some things around with your referend-- excuse me.
Just, okay. Public, okay.
And further, Councilmember Whiteboy, there's some language in Section 7 that covers, says, "If the project set forth shall require less than the entire respective amount so set forth, the difference may be applied to any of the other projects so set forth without further action of the council."
And, and I saw that, because it comes right before the purpose of it.
Exactly.
But, but if it's not listed, it's okay, we just, we'll just come back, and, okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
But, it does give a little flexibility.
Flexibility, okay. Yeah, okay. That's what prompted my question number seven. Thank you.
What? Any further questions? Hearing on, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you all. Item number 2 on the public hearings is a request of Orange Avenue Development LLC to amend the planned unit development plan that specifies use for property located at 2843, 2814, 0, 2838, 2828, 2842, and 2920, Orange Avenue Northeast, 2802 and Old Dalton Road Northeast, Old Scott Road Northeast, and 2519, 2525, and Old Manning Road Northeast, and the portion of right-of-way previously approved for vacation adjacent to certain parcels. The zoning of the property will remain mixed-use planned unit development district. Ben Crew is the agent spokesperson. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to amend the planned unit development plan that specifies uses, location of buildings, and infrastructure, site access, and building design for the property located at 2843, 2814, 0, 2838, 2828, 2842, and 2920, Orange Avenue Northeast, 2802 and 0 Dalton Road Northeast, 0 Scott Road Northeast, 2519, 2525, and 0 Manning Road Northeast, and the portion of right-of-way previously approved for vacation between official tax map numbers 7120208 and 7170201, bearing official tax map numbers 7070114, 7130104, 7130105, 7130106, 7130107, 7130108, 7130109, 7130113, 7130123, 7130121, 7130122, 7120208, and 7170201, respectively, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Yay. Mr. Mayor, I didn't, I wasn't paying attention, because she reads.
Well, you know who your friends are. Let me say that the City Planning Commission recommends approval. We don't get numbers anymore, do we, just approval, or just approval, but they recommend approval. All right, and, Mr. Crew? We'll recognize you for any comments you want to make, or you just want to come and respond to any questions that may come up?
Respond to questions.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to ask the clerk, are there any citizens signed up to be heard on this matter?
No, sir.
Yes. I signed. I mean, before, when I came in the door, I signed up.
All right, Chris, since we only have one spuder on the speaker.
Well, I would agree with you also.
Did he sign up also? You signed up?
I signed up right before I came in.
All right. Chris Kraft, and then we'll get your name when you come on.
Good evening, Mayor, ladies, members of the city council. I am really, really excited. You can't tell from, because I'm tired, but Thompson Development, Thomas Development has got some great plans for my neighborhood along Orange Avenue. He has plans to realign Mecca Road to make it more accessible to those new apartments. He has that car wash coming where Southern Classic used to be, and he has some retailers that are not even in the city of Roanoke, or the county, or Salem, that he wants to bring to our city. And I'm excited because he's bringing them to the Wildwood neighborhood. And I just ask that you approve this. It was unanimous by the planning commission. I'm always excited to see new businesses come to the city, but when they come to my neighborhood, just like Amazon, which I'm hoping when they open in August, that the Wildwood can be there for the ribbon cutting. But, anyway, we hope you'll approve this, so we can get this project started and hopefully be done with it by the, one of the businesses by this time at the end of the year.
Chris, we'll do what we can to make sure you get through it for the ribbon cutting, Dan. The gentleman, you signed up, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
David Hoops. I live on Varnell in the neighborhood adjacent to this development. I would first like to say that I've been a supporter of the project ever since I saw that it was proposed and approved originally. I'm looking forward to the development in the neighborhood. We have, we need housing. There's plenty of it. Seems like it's a good start for development in the area. However, this amendment is to add a gas station to the neighborhood. I, I have a couple points that I would like to make on why I feel this is a bad decision. First, in the traffic study area, Hollins Road to King Street, there are currently five operating gas stations on 460. There will be a sixth, as soon as the old Valerho is rehabbed into a Circle K. All of those, but one of them, are on the south side of 460. The only one that's on the north side is the Apple Market that's across from the New Sheets. Point number two, a gas station signals the need for a vehicle to live in the city, to all of the residents as they leave the new development on 460. We've got signs that say we're a bicycle city. I, I, I don't believe that we need to signal you need a vehicle to live in the city. For three, a gas station is not for the surrounding community citizens. It is for the commuters of 460. Four, there is currently an established bicycle shop on the other side of Mecca. The, that business produces bicycle riders on Mecca, getting to the shop, testing bicycles to see if they want to buy that, or ride that bicycle if it fits them, the employees, test ride bicycles there to test conditions. That puts a lot of bicyclists in the street at the same exit they would like to put a gas station. Most people that leave a gas station are not looking, paying attention, they're focused on getting around. Point number five, there's no grocery store on 460 in the northeast in the city. Like, you're looking at 1,500 people in this new development that will take their tax dollars out of the jurisdiction to buy groceries. It would be nice if they could walk across the street, carry their groceries home. So, I'm very short on time. I would like to ask you to please say no to the amendment, but continue with the rest of the project. They can find other solutions for that lot. A gas station is not beneficial. The citizens have no need for a gas station anymore. They have other options within two miles of where this development is going. I would like to see that we actually focus on active transportation and not vehicle-focused development. Thank you. I wish you have, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crews, you have any response here?
Good evening, members of council. Ben Crew with Ballser and Associates, agent on this particular request. I'm going to introduce you to Daniel Cyrus with Orange Avenue Development LLC. Owners and developers of this particular property, just thought he may shed a little bit of light on some of the thoughts that have been brought up this evening.
Sure. Thank you, Ben. Again, my name is Daniel Cyrus, represent Orange Avenue Development. You've seen me here before with the original request. Just want to take a couple moments to respond to some of the items brought up here, and just to make some clarifications. The request here is specific to one portion of the mixed-use project, which is the former Jersey Lilies property. It's not part of the remainder of the development. The remainder of the development stands as is. Concern of traffic is one thing that was brought up. We actually included a convenience store on this side of the project in the original traffic study. So, that's something that was, that was reviewed by Traffic Engineering Department and by city staff as part of our initial review process for this. So, from a traffic perspective, as, as Mr. Kraft pointed out, we're actually making very significant improvements along Orange Avenue, which includes, basically, completing one of the smart-scale projects that was proposed by VDOT at the intersection at Mecca. So, that's still part of our original project proposal and hasn't changed here. We, Mr. Kraft mentioned that this is a, this is a new retailer that we're proposing to bring to the City of Roanoke. We're not at a point to where we can disclose who that retailer is, and I wish that we could disclose that right now based on a number of points, but what I can say and what I will say is, is that I, we have worked with this retailer for a couple years now, and that I can truly say, and working with a lot of national retailers, that they really have an extremely established sense of community. And what I mean by that is that, really, you know, people say, "Oh, it's just a gas station," or "It's just a convenience store." That may be, but for a lot of people and a lot of folks that live in that neighborhood, it's a daily part of their routine. And that's something that this company, I think, does an incredible job of embodying and creating that sense of community, both within that one store and other stores throughout the region, and also giving back. So, appreciate any questions that you all might have, and appreciate you all's consideration.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me close the public hearing, and then go to my colleagues, and after that, if they have any questions or comments. Mr. Chris Wright, Boig.
Yes, I do, I do have a comment, and I, I appreciate Mr. Hoops coming forward and bringing forth his concern. So, you're not able to disclose exactly what the retailer would be at this time, but you want us to go ahead and approve the amendment. So, I mean, we, we kind of like, I mean, I don't know if it's customary not to know who that is. I know sometimes you don't, but, you know, I'm, I'm just curious what that might be, because if we already have five gas stations, and he's saying maybe a grocery store or some, some sort of store like that would be better suited for that area. He's just one individual, but I respect his opinion, and I, I kind of wanted to, to know and answer myself.
Sure. No, and, and we appreciate and, and respect the opinion as well, and appreciate the comments. We're currently under an NDA and can't disclose who it is at this point. What I can tell you is it's a nationally branded convenience store that's not in the region currently. That, that's really all that we're at liberty to say right now. I understand your points and your comments as far as wanting to know specifically who it is, but I can tell you that, that, you know, they're within the East Coast at this point. They're a quality brand that, like I said, really has a focus on the community, and I think would be a, be a huge win for Roanoke City to, to have one of the, one of the first locations as they're expanding into this part of Virginia.
All right. Mr. Ballser.
We'll have to continue to guess what it is. I've got mine. I just wanted to ask about the point he brought up about biking, because I do remember going to Cardinal Bicycle many a time in my life, and just, I'm, we're doing a lot with the smart-scale project that's going on in that area. Is there any way to, you know, notify folks that there might be more bikes on the, on Mecca than, you know, any other road might be? I know that's getting into the weeds a little bit when we're coming to this, but is that a possibility?
Sure. Yeah, and, and I guess to answer that question, I mean, throughout this whole process since the beginning of this, we've worked very closely with the owner of Cardinal Bicycle throughout this. They have been extremely excited about this project because of the intersection improvement that's happening through there. And so, not to get too far into the specifics of it, but that's going to be a huge help from a safety perspective for, for, you know, their business, for both bicycle traffic and pedestrian traffic and automotive traffic. It's all part of their business. So, you know, they've been a big supporter of this, through this project. We have actually donated some property to them as a part of this to help them with their, with their business, and as a part of the realignment of Mecca through here. So, you know, I, I think, I'm not a bicycle expert, but I would say if someone is, they probably are, and, and I think they've been very satisfied with it. Okay. Thank you.
One small comment.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
I want to help, I'm a former economic development guy, and you can't disclose your prospect as much as me might want. That's a canon in that business, you don't do that. And I hope we understand he's not trying to cause us any difficulty. Secondly, I'm so old, I can't ride a bike anyway, so I want to make sure y'all all know that, but the big picture is, most people are not going to be riding bikes on Orange Avenue. There's a wonderful neighborhood behind that, where any testing of bicycles and being comfortable with yourself, it's absolutely perfect. And so, if they don't already do it, I, I would encourage that you all talk to the owner, who I know, and hopefully he'll encourage his folks to go by the fire station and back over that way, and it would be a lot better for all involved. We appreciate this huge housing opportunity. Roanoke's greatest weakness right now is housing, and most people don't understand we're landlocked, and the only way we're going to keep taxes from skyrocketing is infilling with projects like yours on a piece of property that's been laying there forever. This is a big deal for the city and for our citizens, for our retailers, and I don't have a problem with gas stations going out of town, because that means people from Roanoke County and Bodatot County and Bedford County are buying gas in the city before they leave. That's, those are just dollar signs to me. But, I think the big picture is, far more important than the gas station is the investments you're making in the residential units that will be homes for Roanoke citizens in the future, and we thank you very much for taking the time and investing in the city.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add, because I think you brought this up in the original proposal, that, am I remembering correctly, that you also are building in a bus stop, a dedicated bus stop?
Correct.
For access to public transit?
That's correct.
And that's one of our key routes out to Blue Hills, so.
Correct. Yes, that's a part of our project and hasn't changed. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any more comments, questions? Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy? Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. So, it passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number three is a request of Aboon Real Estate Incorporated to close by vocation an approximately 0.05 acre portion of Midmont Circle Southwest at the curve in the street being adjacent to multiple parcels for incorporation into the larger master plan, and to rezon the property located at eight parcels, addressed at Old Midmont, Midmont Circle Southwest, and the portion of right-of-way to be vacated adjacent to certain parcels from R2, R12, which is residential single-- Single Family District, to Mixed-Use Plan Unit Development District. Subject to the development plan, Alexander Boone is the spokesperson. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to, one, close by vacation an approximately 0.05 acre portion of Medmont Circle Southwest at the curve in the street being adjacent to official tax map numbers 514-0123, 514-0124, 514-0125, and 514-0126 for incorporation into the larger master plan. And, two, rezone the properties located at 5093 Medmont Circle Southwest and eight parcels addressed as zero Medmont Circle Southwest bearing official tax map numbers 513-0136, 514-0121, 514-0122, 514-0123, 514-0124, 514-0125, 514-0126, 514-0127, and 514-0128, and the portion of right-of-way to be vacated adjacent to official tax map numbers 514-0123, 514-0124, 514-0125, and 514-0126 from R. 12 Residential District to MXPUD, Mixed-Use Planned Unit Development District, subject to the development plan that specifies uses, location of buildings, and infrastructure, site access, and building design, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval of this plan, and now I'll recognize Mr. Crew for any comments that he would like to make, or he can wait to answer any questions or comments, either way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take the opportunity to address council at this time, if you will.
Yes, sir.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, city professional staff, and fellow citizens. I'm excited to be here tonight to share a proposal for a new community in the city of Roanoke. In some ways, when you talk about 750 units that we just discussed on the prior application, you know, 24 maybe doesn't seem as important, but this is very important. It's a very important type of housing that we need in the city of Roanoke. I'm excited to be here because there's such a strong sense of community here. I've really appreciated the sense of community that some of the Medmont residents shared with me, and as a developer, that's your goal, and that's what we do. We create community, and that's exactly what we're going to do at Kegy Way if you approve it tonight. I've worked with the city planning team over a number of years on various ideas to improve housing opportunities in the city. As soon as John Carter called me to discuss this project and, or to discuss purchasing his land, I immediately called the city planning team and met with them to talk about ideas. What might we do here? What do you see for here? Not just what I thought. What do you think works here? Let's look at the city comprehensive plan. Let's look at the language. We did all those things. So I think I'm presenting tonight a plan that meets the City Plan 2040, the comprehensive plan, and takes a step to direct a housing opportunity that you, city council, that the planning commission and the city planning staff has said, we need more housing in the city of Roanoke, just as Mr. Fitzpatrick said during the last one. The city planning department actually shared recently that we need 4,000 new, or additional housing units in the city over the next couple of years just to meet our demand, just in the next couple of years. So right now, again, I'm only proposing 24, but it's important because we're proposing different types of housing. Of 24 units, we're prepared to develop 20 first-floor primary bedroom suites, primarily targeting empty nesters but open to anyone, and then we'll develop four townhomes on that front Kegy, because those lots fit an upstairs primary bedroom suite. Those units will be targeted more towards younger demographic. So we're looking to have an older demographic, a younger demographic. We're trying to create a community of different people, different ages, and for, at Kegy Way. So the land would have supported more units, but we worked very hard, you know, with Ben Crew of Balzer Associates, who is just up here, and 24 worked well. The development works with 24. Again, it could have more. It really can't have less. You know, the city of Roanoke has done a great job and has invested millions of dollars to attract new residents and new businesses to the city of Roanoke, but where will they live? If they can't live here, they can't move here. I hate to say it, but it's more likely somebody who moves to the Roanoke Valley is going to end up living in Roanoke County or Bodatot County, not because they want to, it's because they can't find a place to live in the city. And people who want one-floor living and no-maintenance living are more likely to end up in a local jurisdiction, because they too can't find that type of housing in Roanoke City. We're trying to resolve that issue. Likewise, businesses don't relocate to a place or grow in their home if their workforce can't live in proximity to the office. Simply put, we can't grow enhanced community. I keep talking about that tonight, but that's what we're trying to do here. You know, we have to do things differently from a planning and zoning perspective, and this body has been doing that, you know, over the last couple of years. You know, a stated purpose of City Plan 2040 is to create diverse housing options where people, and I quote, "of different ages and different stages of life can live and create community together." Again, that's exactly what we're trying to do. So why townhomes? Why not single-family homes? Unfortunately, development and housing material costs have skyrocketed, you know, more than 40% since 2020, and that's just a reality. Developments that were feasible in the past no longer are feasible. Single-family lots were predominantly what you saw built, and that's predominantly what we built, but you can't do it anymore for the most part. It's very difficult because the expenses are so high. The property on Medmont Circle was for sale for two years, not an offer. I was the only person who made an offer on it and worked with Mr. Carter over a long period of time to try to make this work. So Mr. Carter shared with me that he bought the property to develop single-family lots. As y'all saw in the file, is he actually platted, engineered with Ben Crew and Balzer Associates, eight single-family lots, including one was a stormwater management lot, and in that case, they finished it, they platted it, and they put it out to bid, and the bids and the numbers came back more than three times higher than what they had anticipated. And that was before full COVID inflation kicked in, so it's significantly higher at this time. Once we had a contract and I worked with city planners, we also did look at single-family housing. Honestly, it's easier to build, and I wanted to try to make it work, but it just didn't work. The numbers don't work, and that's unfortunate. But when you look at what the options are, there are lots of options across the country right now, and please, you know, as we look at tying townhomes to what our needs are in Roanoke, if I just could share a couple of items from, again, from the City Plan 2040, because that's our roadmap for, as developers in the city. Number one, new development should be well-planned and use limited land resources wisely. We certainly know we have very limited land and we're landlocked in the city. It goes on to say that infrastructure should be installed in conjunction with new development, including street improvements to address added traffic. Number two, residential areas that consist predominantly, rather than exclusively, of single-family homes, these areas may include other middle housing options, including townhomes. And lastly, one of the goals is to enable a range of housing types in each part of the community to achieve inclusive, livable neighborhoods. That's exactly what we're proposing here. I mean, to a T. Here, when you look at the width of the blocks of our townhomes, you know, they're similar in width to the average width of a house on Medmont. They're wide ranches predominantly. We have exterior maintenance-free living. So many people want exterior maintenance-free living these days, and they're so hard to find. We're proposing road improvements, just as the City Plan 2040 told us to do. If you have added traffic, which we think is minimal, and my partner, Mr. Rosen, will speak on traffic momentarily, we'll make the road improvements. We're going to add sidewalks in front of our units. We're going to add more landscaping than required. We're going to have great backyards for recreation. We can have swing sets. You know, we can keep kids out of the street. There's been discussion about kids and people walking in the street. If you've got a great backyard, why would you go in the street? So we also offer, very importantly, main and upper primary bedroom suites. Some of the units even have walkout basements. Those are great to have in the city. And we've also proffered the townhome elevations we're going to build. We're building a proposed popular and expensive board-and-batten siding, so it's much more expensive than your typical siding and very popular today. So I hope I've shared with you why townhomes. There are a lot of great reasons, and they're among the most popular form of new housing today across the United States, because you can get a less expensive new home. New homes are crazy expensive today, and we know that. It's really embarrassing when you talk about what an average new home costs today, but it is what it is, and we're trying to create a more, a less expensive new home today. So for a moment, I'd like to turn the podium over to my partner, Court Rosen, who's our Director of Development, to discuss traffic, stormwater management, and anything else you'd have, and I'd like to come back for any questions. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about a few of the more technical components of the proposed Kegy Way community. We believe this proposed development meets both the spirit and the letter of the comprehensive plan and the direly neighborhood plan, and the design maintains the architectural integrity of the community, creating improved infrastructure to benefit the existing neighborhood. We've spent a great deal of time meeting with residents and stakeholders in Medmont and the larger, greater direly neighborhood. One component of our community that has come up at length is the impact that this development would have on the existing street network. It would not be completely honest to suggest there is no impact on the street system in the area, but we believe the impact is quite minimal. One expressed concern by a few residents was increased cut-through traffic, that is, traffic coming from 419 that would turn onto Medmont Circle and cut through the neighborhood. This scenario is minimally likely in a practical driving situation. If a driver were located at Tanglewood or out 419, this may occur in limited situations, but drivers coming from the other direction on 419, from downtown, from Corillian, from Towers, they will go out at Brandon to Apperson, turn onto Kegy Road, and then onto Medmont from Kegy Road. This is both a function of driving efficiency and the difference in signalized intersections. There are more than twice the number of traffic signals coming out 419 than out Apperson and Brandon, so it wouldn't make sense for you to choose that direction. It would take a lot longer to get there, and sometimes significantly longer at peak travel hours. It's important to note, too, that as part of the development, the road in front of these parcels would be widened to 22 feet of asphalt with two feet of concrete gutter pan on either side of the road for a total of 26 feet in width. This doesn't include sidewalks to be built as well. This creates a situation that allows for on-street parking while creating passable lanes for traffic. I also want to mention that on-street parking with this width of road creates a natural traffic calming situation where traffic slows down to pass by parked vehicles. You may have received information comparing road widths in different areas of Direly, indicating overly-wide roads in other parts of the neighborhood. In a vacuum, these comparisons do make some sense, but real-world traffic, pass-through traffic, and the actual road network that surrounds those areas have an impact on the requirements for that road width. Without looking at a much larger surrounding road network and traffic flow, these comparisons really aren't analogous to one another. In fact, VDOT and ASHTO, which is the National Highway Safety and Transportation Group, standards on a road with curb and gutter and with the average daily traffic that is being proposed here require an even narrower road than the 26 feet we're talking about. While I appreciate the time and effort that some of the neighbors have put into measuring street width elsewhere, the comparison and engineering requirements simply don't compare without looking at the much larger street network around that specific road. Incidentally, the much wider roads that some have suggested would create a far greater likelihood that people would speed through the neighborhood rather than slow down. With this proposed townhome development, there would be 15 driveways. The new development has been designed to create shared driveways whenever possible. As the property exists today, we could do 10 driveways by right to build 10 single-family homes. So your support to rezone the property would actually only allow for five additional driveways beyond what's already permitted in the neighborhood right now. We envision, because of the garages in the units, very little resident parking on the street, but when they have guests over, people may park on the street, but that's a situation not unlike what happens currently in the neighborhood, yet we'll now have six feet of additional width in the road for that to occur. I want to address stormwater management briefly. As you can see on the exhibit, at the bottom area, there will be a stormwater management facility that will detain water and then provide an outflow for that water. There will be drop inlets along the road, like our downtown, like you see on other city streets, that will catch the water, and then underground piping that will direct that stormwater to that stormwater facility. We've had several neighbors near our proposed development indicate that in heavy storms, water sheet flows from Kegy Road down Medmont Circle and into their yards. The stormwater infrastructure that we will build with the drop inlets along Medmont and with the underground piping will capture most of that flow and send it to the newly-built facility, reducing the impact that existing neighbors will have from future storms. This creates a benefit to existing residents by the newly-created infrastructure. We've also been asked about the location of the stormwater facility and whether that's wetlands. First, we do not believe that is wetlands, but Mr. Crew and his staff at Balzer, they have wetland specialists who, once we move forward to a comprehensive plan development, not just the rezoning, would go out and delineate the area and determine what that land is. The second point I want to make is that that land is at a low elevation and a low point, and not unlike our own yards, the low point is where water collects during a storm. So some of that ponding really is just because it is the lowest point of the neighborhood. Please know that we understand how change and progress can sometimes be uncomfortable. We really do. And we have no issue with somebody opposing a rezoning, because they just don't like that change. We would simply ask that you look at both the standards and engineering as guides to the appropriateness of this new community. We believe, as does the planning commission, that Kegy Way meets a need that has been identified by the city, is designed as the actual engineering determines necessary, and will be a positive addition to what is already a great neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration of our rezoning request, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right. Pardon? Oh, fine. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can staff make one mention first?
Yes, ma'am.
So, staff just wants to proactively clarify that public notice for this project spanned two separate legal notice requirements, and so the project was legally advertised on June 3 and on June 10 before the public hearing at Planning Commission was first opened on June 10, at which four people spoke. It was then again re-advertised on July 1 and July 8 before the second public hearing on July 8. And if you have any questions regarding this that may come up tonight, then council will respond to those, and staff is available to answer any other questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'll ask the clerk, are the citizens signed up to speak to this issue? We call them in the order that they sign up, please.
David Harrison.
And everybody's given three minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of councils, appreciate the time to be here tonight. Good evening. I'm David Harrison. I live at 5305 Medmont Circle Southwest. I have raised this issue in the past because I didn't want to surprise anybody here tonight by throwing anybody a curveball, but I dispute the assertion that there was adequate public notice. I know you want to do things by the book. Virginia Code 1522204 says, and this is amended as of July 1 of this year, "The local planning commission shall not recommend, nor the governing body adopt any plan, ordinance, or amendment thereof until notice of intention to do so has been published twice and some newspaper published or having general circulation in the locality, with the first notice appearing no more than 28 days and the second notice appearing no less than seven days before the date of the meeting referenced in the notice." In this case, the second notice was on July 8, which was the day of the Planning Commission meeting, only a few hours before the meeting at 1:30, not seven days before it as required by the... before it as required by the statute. So, I know that it says that the Planning Commission recommended, they do not have authority to recommend to you, so in fact, you have nothing before you this evening to vote on because of the failure of the notice. So, I'm sorry to have to raise that issue right now. I know that's a surprise, and I didn't intend to do it, and that's the reason I made several efforts to communicate with various people that this was an issue, so that we wouldn't waste everybody's time this evening. But it is not properly before the meeting. You do not have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and accordingly, there's nothing for you to vote on this evening.
Mr. Spencer.
Real quickly, there was actually four notices advertised, and remember, before July, that's when the new law went into place. This matter was properly advertised on June 3rd and June 10th, and the law at that time stated that it needed to be advertised once a week for two successive weeks, which that did, and that it had to be at least appearing no more than 14 days before the intended adoption. Intended adoption. It was continued. We didn't have, when it was continued, the city did not have to advertise again. It did in the sake of transparency. We've looked at the statute, and my colleague, Ms. Laura Karini's here who handled this and she spoke to it as well, but we complied with the code. What he's trying to do is ignore the first notice. They clearly complied with the statute and tried to apply the second advertising, which was duplicative, simply to say, oh, you didn't do it right. But we did. We're caught in the middle between the two statutes, but we satisfied the requirements the first time with the advertisements on the 3rd and 10th. Later came back and advertised. Ms. Karini, do you wish to speak to this issue?
How do you answer any questions you may have? I think Tim covered everything that I would have to say.
Okay, well, I'm satisfied with the response of our attorney. Now, colleagues have some questions. They can ask him, but I'm satisfied.
I'm satisfied. I just wanted clarity on one thing, and that is, you mentioned that the June, they held the meeting in June, and it was just continued. Okay.
Correct. We opened the public hearing, and we, four speakers spoke, and then we continued. We did not close the public hearing.
Right.
We continued the public hearing to the meeting in July.
Good point.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Spoken like a former clerk.
Yes. That's the piece. That was the piece I was looking for. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Jan Keister.
How many speakers do we have, Madam Clerk?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Test, test. I'm Jan Keister of 817 Marshall Avenue, Southwest. I work at an organization that helps low-income people with housing problems and am elected to represent the Old Southwest, Inc. neighborhood in zoning issues. Zoning's for the benefit of all residents. Most residents have carefully chosen the neighborhood they wish to live in and have worked hard to achieve a nice home in the place of their choice. Anyone can do that regardless of race, religion, or similar factors. I can't have a manufacturing business or a kennel in my home. If I wanted to do that, I would move to a neighborhood zoned appropriately. Ditto if I wanted to live in a multi-unit dwelling. Why? Because my lifestyle affects my neighbor's quality of life. City planners have emphasized a need for more multi-unit housing to increase equity as a reason for allowing this type of project. This so-called missing-middle housing shortage is a new idea that doesn't apply to Roanoke, where almost 11% of our housing is vacant and the population is not predicted to grow. Building materials are so expensive that it isn't profitable to build newer, make vacant houses habitable, and it's illogical to expect anyone to pay more than they have to for this housing. People aren't moving to more expensive units to make more inexpensive units available. True equity is not possible unless everyone has the same income and buying power. We all know that Roanoke is at the bottom of the list of U.S. cities for generational poverty. Research indicates that allowing more mixed-middle housing helps fewer than 1% of people, and none of them are lower-middle income. Typically, the main beneficiaries are property developers. New housing like this project and even tiny houses just cost too much. If these units are to be profitable, they will not be affordable to low- and middle-income people. A family with a $50,000 income, the median in Roanoke, can afford a $150,000 mortgage. In Roanoke, new townhomes like these start at $300,000. The Roanoke Housing Study indicates the need for more low-cost units, which are not viable without government funding, to cover the gap between what low-income middle families can afford and the high cost of building materials. None of the over 18,000 low-income people helped in the last five years by the Legal Aid Society where I work can afford to buy or rent a townhouse like this, even if the price is reduced by 2/3. And what about parking? The average Roanoke unit has two vehicles. This development does not have enough driveway length and width or garage space for all cars and has office, no on-street parking, and no alleys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen Farrell.
Good evening. My name's Karen Farrell, and my husband and I have lived at 5217 Medmont Circle for over 31 years. I have the same concerns with density, traffic, parking, emergency response, stormwater, and liability that everyone else has or will mention tonight. I did have a speech about our neighborhood being close-knit, multi-generational, and how that is a testament to what we have on Medmont, and that it should be preserved at all cost. I also wanted to mention that the property was never listed publicly as being for sale, so no one else had any option to purchase it. However, I received an email this morning from a council member that let me know, that I met with last week, letting me know that the zoning would be approved. They encouraged me to come to this meeting anyway and voice my opinion. It is disappointing to know that the city doesn't value what long-term residents want in their neighborhoods. Mr. Boone says it would not be feasible to build single-family homes or to even decrease the number of townhomes that he plans to put in a small, hilly, curvy space. What really, what he really means is that it wouldn't be profitable. We are the ones who will be left to deal with the aftermath of this decision. We know that once approved and problems do develop, it will be hard to get them addressed. We will be stuck living with the consequences of this vote. I'm going to ask you to please listen to the residents and vote no on rezoning.
Karen Musgrove.
Good evening. My name is Karen Musgrove, and I live at 5521 Medmont Circle. I am a second-generation homeowner. My family bought this home in 1972. I was here last Monday afternoon and listened to all my neighbors speak to the Planning Commission Board with very sound arguments against the proposed zoning changes. After all the neighbors gave their reasons of opposition, there were the few questions from the planning board. One board member asked about the neighbors' personal increased liability of adding 24 more homes regarding any property damage or answerable to any legal action which may result from unauthorized use of the lake, beach, or park area. The response was, that is not a zoning concern. Well, that may not be a zoning issue, however, there will be many negative consequences if this passes tonight. There will be issues with trespassing by these new neighbors. I included in my last letter pictures of the lake, beach, and park areas. This is a very desirable place to go, and if you live in a space that does not have any yard, children will be drawn to this area. Access is extremely easy. So are we to call the Roanoke City Police every time a child or an adult trespasses? In Salem, on Calhoun Street, there are six townhomes that were built that happened for sale for a year. As of the last week, only one has sold, and the owner is trying now to rent some of these. The, I'm sorry. This, any potential consequences is that these homes may not sell, so then they are turned into rental properties, just like the townhomes on Calhoun Street in Salem. Medmont residents' homes will devalue due to having a hillside full of rental property. I handed out this flyer here, which is something our neighbors got together, as shows the congestion and the extremely dangerous that many neighbors will be talking about. This, each wheel was two feet off on both sides of the road, and you can see, even if they add additional width to it, it will not be safe. My understanding of the Roanoke City Council Board is to do what is in the best interest of all residents of the city. The proposal is not in the best interest of this neighborhood. It is in the best financial interest of Mr. Boone and Mr. Carter. My question is, would you want 24 homes shoved into 3 and 1/2 acres on a hillside, which is also the only exit to a traffic light to turn left onto 419? My guess is that you wouldn't want this in your neighborhood any more than we do. Please vote your conscience and vote no. Thank you for your time.
William Harrison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Bill Harrison. I live on Keegy Road. We retired here about a year ago, and the first thing I want to say is, we love Roanoke. We love the city. We sit in our backyard every night, and we look at those mountains. I emailed a minister friend of mine back in Richmond the other day and said, "I think if you make it to heaven, this is what it looks like." With that said, in the last few weeks, I've met a lot of my neighbors because of our concerns about this proposal, and I've realized that I owe them a great deal of gratitude because it is because of them that I'm living in the neighborhood that I am able to enjoy. The quality of life is more important to me than anything, and so many of the folks behind me tonight have lived in this neighborhood for generations. They've raised their families. They've invested years of love into this community, the tree-lined streets, the kids on the bicycles, raising their families. You mentioned earlier, sir, how Roanoke is landlocked. I hope that that is not the deciding factor on this proposal. There's gotta be a way that this city can raise money more effectively than destroying the integrity of a neighborhood that has been nurtured for so long, and that is what will happen if this proposal passes. I would never be so presumptuous as to stand here and tell you how to do your jobs, but if I were in your seats, before I cast a vote, I would visit this neighborhood. You can look at all the renderings that you want to, but you need to come see the neighborhood and listen to the people who live there. Thank you.
Jeff Cutright.
Well, I'm Jeff Cutright, and I live at 5527 Medmont Circle, and I'm the road guy. And so, there's no, just for your information, there's, in the city guidelines, there's no 25-foot road in the guideline. It's 20, no curb and gutter, 22 with curb and gutter, and those two roads only have travel lanes. The next road is 29 feet or 30 feet with the gutter, that it's a 7-foot parking lane and a 22-foot-wide travel lanes, and that's the same guideline that the state has. And the reason this is important to me is when we and my neighbors would like, need an ambulance or a fire truck, and if you've ever called for an ambulance, the first people that show up is the fire truck, and then the ambulance, and then the boss, right, the supervisor. So you've got all these cars, and I would really like to see this ambulance and fire truck get to my house and my neighbor's house, and you should think about the new neighbors. So how'd you like to buy one of these and find out, oh, for the sake of a few dollars, we didn't make the street wide enough to get a fire truck down it. And, you know, I don't know about you, but when you come up on a fire truck, the idea is to stop and get out of the way. So there's very possible there's going to be more than a few cars parked on this street. Ms. Gray gave me some streets to look at that were not the ones in my neighborhood that are wide. There are dead-end streets in our neighborhood that are going to be wider than this street, so why can't this street be wider? That is a cut-through street and a street that's on a, let's get this right, 20-degree slope with a 90-degree turn. And so when the houses are burnt there, we don't need any more traffic calming than 17 driveways, right? A driveway that's shared is two driveways from two houses, not from one. So let's get that right. And the other, those houses, the streets that Ms. Gray gave me are single-family houses, distance between them, double-car garage, double-car driveways. Thank you, Mr. Google, for letting me get there, because I didn't get these addresses still after 5 o'clock. And one has townhouses that are, not townhouses, they're duplexes with driveways, double-car driveways at each end of the house that are separated, so there would be an opportunity to get off the street if you needed to. In our neighborhood, when we park, we park off of the street. Thank you very much. I appreciate you considering our safety.
Charlotte McCauley.
Good evening. I am Charlotte McCauley, and I have lived at 5105 Medmont Circle for 36 years. I'm very concerned about various problems that can be caused by building 24 townhomes in such a small space. Seven of the proposed townhomes will be adjacent to my own. 24 townhomes will fit on the property, but that doesn't mean it's the best fit for our neighborhood. Neighborhoods like ours are disappearing. We want to save ours, not just for us, but for future generations. Some of my concerns include the lack of privacy for myself and my neighbors. Even if a 6-foot privacy fence is installed or trees planted, which will take years to grow, that will not solve the privacy problem because of the number of townhomes and their height. I don't know of anyone who wants 24 townhomes next door to you. There are concerns in regard to increased water runoff, because water runoff is already an existing problem flooding our properties. 24 townhomes times two residents equal approximately 48 cars possibly needing to park on the street and in nearby front yards, which do not have sidewalks to be a barrier. We have seen increased traffic and speeding traffic, especially in the last few years on Keegy, Route 419, and through our neighborhood, making it more and more difficult to exit Medmont safely. Medmont safely. In addressing one of our traffic concerns, Mr. Boone stated, "The additional traffic generated by the development on Medmont Circle is not anticipated to over-saturate the existing street network." We are stressing the need to, Mr. Boone and City Council, to anticipate the possibility of all of our concerns and take action now by not allowing 24 townhomes to be built. Instead, we ask for individuals patio-style homes to be built to prevent or lessen our anticipated concerns. We don't want to revisit problems after 24 townhomes are built. I would like to express special thanks to all of the council members who have met with us in the neighborhood and visited the property to see firsthand our concerns. Thank you, thank you, thank you, for those who came. Our neighborhood has always been diverse, inclusive, and welcoming. Some of our neighbors are new; others have lived there for decades. We all have invested interest in Roanoke City to make it a great place to live. Please vote against the rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Suzanne Turner?
Hi, I'm Suzanne Turner. I reside at 5332 Medmont Circle. Council members, good evening, and mayor. I respect and greatly appreciate those of you who took the time and used due diligence investigating further the Medmont-Cagey property under consideration for rezoning. Thank you. Mr. Boone's earlier proposal for eight homes to be built, given the area, occurred as reasonable. His subsequent proposal for 17 townhomes, given the small enclave there was, was undesirable to me and others unthinkable. His more recent proposal of squeezing only 24 townhomes into only a several, excuse me, three and a half acre tract tops the chart to me as extreme unimaginable. And yes, I submit unconscionable on his part. Can Mr. Boone not see how dense and increasingly dangerous this area would quickly become for pedestrians and pets, for drivers of cars and vans, cyclists along with dump trucks, garbage trucks, school buses, one of which ran off the road, on the narrow road, rescue squad and emergency vehicles, and those possibly blocked due to on-road parking on an already too narrow road? Who would want to live there, given the level of crowding and congestion this plan is likely or definitely would produce? Would you, Mr. Boone?
Absolutely.
Well, good for you. Welcome.
I look forward to hearing your name.
Who but you would consider a major increase in traffic and concerns about adequate parking negligible issues? Who would consider the addition of 24 units in what is such a small area conducive to accessibility or even suitability for active family living? Besides, who considers a half a million dollar unit affordable housing? It seems this plan, per the city's statement, does ensure that the city uses remaining lands efficiently. But how might the sheer number of townhomes and the hard space surrounding them impact You may feel pressed to do something now, but for anyone to push through blindly, thoughtlessly, half-heartedly, what are real and serious, serious concerns would put a massive load on those here, both current residents and those stuffed into an inadequate space. Who among council members will gain the respect of the city and also the county by doing what is due diligence here? Traffic and infrastructure studies must be instigated now. Studies capable of preventing costly changes with charges to the city in the months and years ahead. For that reason, the vote must be delayed or a simple no. Thank you.
Anthony Stavola?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm here tonight, Anthony Stavola, I live on 1836 Greenwood Road, but I've been a frequent visitor to Medmont. And I'm here tonight to speak in support of the residents of Medmont and their concerns about this project. I also wish to address this in the context of larger issues related to the recent and up-for-reapproval massive rezoning that has been already put in place by this council. When I hear from the citizens of Medmont are not statements indicating they wish to have their neighborhood put in a lockbox, I hear concerns about the density, the impacts it will have on the local infrastructure and safety concerns, and proposals for alternatives and compromises to lower some of the density that seem quite reasonable. The issue before you as members of council is that you are putting in place policies that send a message to homeowners that I do not think is in the city's long-term best interest. Your message, and I can assure you that it's being received, is this: If you consider buying a home in the city of Roanoke, be prepared for the following: You will pay the highest taxes of any locality in the region. And for that privilege, the city will tell you that you cannot have a reasonable amount of input into decisions that affect your investment in your home and your neighborhood. And they will tell you that if you attempt to do that, you are perpetuating processes from the past, such as redlining and restrictive covenants, when all you're trying to do is know that the neighborhood that you have chosen and invested in will not be adversely impacted by regulations that allow virtually unlimited changes in housing mix. You will also be told that the city has no concern about having the developers provide adequate support for things like parking, but that if it presents a problem, you, the homeowner, can address that at your own expense. The city will then tell you that because you've created more impervious surface, you're gonna have to pay an additional fee. But somehow, the developers don't have to address this issue. And be aware, be very aware, that if city representatives say that they want you to engage in a discussion and look at possible modifications to their proposals, and you willingly engage in that process, there's a high probability, based on our experience, that you will be then told that no meaningful changes will be considered. And if any members of council wish to confirm this, feel free to discuss it with the consulting lawyer hired at taxpayers' expense for many hundreds of dollars an hour. I want this council to know that we are already hearing anecdotally from people who are looking at homes in Roanoke City that they are having second thoughts. And just to turn the argument about Roanoke being landlocked, I'm gonna turn that around here, because what I want to say is, neither this council nor the planning department can dictate to individuals what type of housing they wish to have and where they wish to have it. And people who are concerned about the directions that are being taken here can very easily take their search and their spending dollars and their tax dollars to another locality.
Leonita Cutright?
I appreciate it. I guess, to begin, my name is Leonita Cutright. I live at 5527 Medmont Circle. First, Richard Kelly, a member of our community, really wanted to be here. This was the one meeting he wanted, but he had an uneventful medical issue today and apologizes for not being here and not being able to speak. Mr. Boone, you mentioned that you've heard from, I don't know how many people, that they were in favor of this, but 49 people showed up on Saturday, and, Mr. Cobb, I really appreciate you being there to listen to our concerns on Saturday. And all of those folks were not in favor of the development, but it's so, I'm not sure how many people that you have talked to.
We have records, and I'm glad to share.
That would be great, yeah.
Amen. Address your comments, the council.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay.
And again, I think the community would appreciate that. Three things I want to discuss: The developmental process, density, and marketability. The process of development, really, and the concerns of our community. The Planning Commission has approved this project in concept. There's not been a comprehensive review of this proposal. And my understanding is that it is conducted after approval by the city council, and then after which, the community has no input into the continued plans. This, to me, does not seem to be fair to the community to not have input into a more intense proposal. I ask before you prove it that you hear the expressed concerns of everybody. Our community is a very welcoming community, and we want to see development done well. We understand the desire to develop the two properties that Mr. Boone is proposing. As a community, we would like our concerns to be heard and problems mitigated prior to construction. Parking, safety, and environmental impact being the major concerns. We want to be able to see the results of how the 19 standards for site development are being met and have input into that. Mr. Boone, his initial proposal was 17 townhomes. He states that changing the plans to single-family homes would be cost prohibitive. You know, I don't know your spreadsheet, but it concerns me. In our country right now, it seems like profits are being, profits over people. And that's a really deep concern when it comes to our community. Again, the density really is concerning to me. This increases our density in our neighborhood, increasing the traffic and safety concerns, which have already been shared by many of the community already. Let's see, yeah. Okay, marketability. I'm not sure how much these homes will sell for, but someone mentioned that these homes would be worth more than our homes. A townhome with limited parking and limited outdoor space and costing more than my home, in my mind, would not be a great investment. Thank you very much.
Adam Mastrangelo?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the Roanoke City Council. I'm Adam Mastrangelo. I live at 3528 Windsor Oaks Circle, and I'm acting president of the Greater Dyrly Neighborhood Association. I'd like to briefly discuss one point, and that is, Medmont Circle's proposed 25-foot street width, shown on ABRE as 26 feet with curbs. In today's City Council Agenda Report, it states that "The Transportation Division has reviewed the zoning amendment proposal and supports public infrastructure improvements, such as the 26-feet-wide street section curb and gutter, and it also provides a safer, more efficient passage for pedestrians and motorists alike." So let's talk about that. Safer, more efficient. For whom? Safer, more efficient for the residents and friends and homeowners of Medmont? I hope. Fact, the Virginia statewide fire prevention code, under Section 503.2.1, states, quote, "Fire apparatus access roads shall have an unobstructed width of 20 feet." Fact, Section 503 states that, where required by the fire code official, no parking fire lane signs shall be provided. Thus, the 26-foot proposed road is not wide enough to comply with the fire code and the desire to have on-street parking. And this is simple grade-school math. 26 feet minus a one-foot curb is 25 feet. Minus 20 feet for fire road is five feet. And five feet is not enough room for on-street parking on one side, much less both sides. As such, Medmont Circle Road will be posted with no parking fire lane signs on both sides of the street. Fact, ABRE does not talk about parking on-street or otherwise in the amended application number three. Fact, when we spoke with the fire department personnel about this proposal, they had the same comment that we had, our concern, and its support in their amended forms that they provided to Catherine Gray. Question to the council, in the recommendation before you tonight, have these concerns been taken under consideration, and if not, why? We are opposing the zoning amendment and the proposal for the 26-foot street section. By complying with the fire code, this proposal does not provide adequate parking for the new homeowners, their residents, their guests, their services. So in closing, we are aware that if the proposal is approved, a comprehensive development review process will take place. The Greater Dyrly Neighborhood would like to be included in that process, like you did for us for the Peters Creek Road Extension Project several years ago. So thank you for the consideration and your dedication to the city.
Are you John's son?
I am.
Hey, thank you for that.
John L. Harris III. 5423 Medmont Circle. And if you'll pardon me, it'll take me a couple paragraphs to get to my point, but I will get there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager, City Attorney, for the opportunity to speak in opposition to the Boone and others, the rezoning plan and development designated to affect the Medmont subdivision. I'm John Harrison. I've lived on Medmont Circle for 42 years, and I'm still practicing dentistry after 42 years in the cities of Roanoke, Salem, and Roanoke County. All of you as officers of the city, officers of City Council, officers of Planning Commission, or any other officer in the city, took an oath of office to fulfill the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and Code of Virginia, and the Roanoke City Code. In 1991, Governor Wilder appointed me to the Virginia Board of Dentistry, serving two years with him and two years with Governor Allen. I, too, took an oath of office to the U.S. and Virginia constitutions to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, but was not present on that board to be an advocate of the American Dental Association, the Virginia Dental Association, Piedmont Dental Society, or Roanoke Valley Dental Society, all of which I'm a life member. I was an advocate for the citizens of Virginia. I was never asked or accused myself of any board business by any citizen, any dentist, dental hygienist, or any licensed laboratory. This is the point now. The point is that we serve all in our respective roles in government as public advocates. You continue to do so as our elected and appointed officials. States and local governments have constitutional duty to protect the safety, along with the health and welfare of all. Our neighborhood and others have demonstrated our concerns for the negative impact this rezoning change will have, especially by going from an approved eight-patio homes originally to 17 townhouses and now to 24 townhouses. I ask that you consider voting against this rezoning or consider amending the proposal to allow the original patio homes and two additional patio homes across the street from the currently approved patio homes. This is within your authority to do so as specified by law. Thank you for hearing me, and I support my neighbors and the efforts to defeat this resolution.
Paul Glassprinter?
My name is Paul Glassprinter. I live at 5221 Medmont Circle southwest in Roanoke. I've lived in Medmont for 41 years and have seen a number of developments that have sprung up and defeated a few that have sprung up around us. I have three concerns that I'm mainly concerned about. One, a street width, the parking situation, and stormwater. The street width, specifically the intersection of Cagey Road and Medmont. The road is narrow. Even with the proposed change, will not be wide enough for many of the school buses that swing in to that, into our neighborhood. We also have fire trucks that come through regularly and other emergency vehicles. The parking that we currently will be facing is insufficient for the space that we have. It would make sense to most people, I think, that if they created a satellite overflow parking, that we wouldn't be having the problems with the parking on the street. As stated by Adam, that far- As stated by Adam, that fire trucks are going to have a hard time coming down through that road. Many times, the school buses now, when they pull in, if there's a car coming up to the top of the hill, they either have to back up or have to pull out, and the school bus waits for them to get out of the way so they can swing in. What I'm worried about is we're going to wind up with our parking situation similar to what Raleigh Court experiences. Cars on both sides, or car on one side, and there's barely any room to get through. Now, the planning department said that the parking, it would not be a problem. I've lost my focus, I'm sorry. Anyway, let's go on stormwater. The stormwater has originally had 17 houses in the plat. We've now gone to 21 without any increase in the side for to handle the stormwater that comes down through heavy rain or hurricane. And we are worried that we will have flooding if the stormwater basins are overwhelmed and the stormwater will flow out to Medmont. The bottom of the hill will be flat, and there will be nothing to stop any water coming down from the new proposal. So based upon that, I would hope everyone will vote your conscience and vote no for the improvement. Thank you.
John Delaro.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council. My name is John Delaro. I live at 1438 Barnhart Drive. I have two points I'd like to bring up to you. The first is I have an article from the Roanoke Times dated Monday, September 17, 1956, and it's titled, "Recreation is an Attraction for Medmont Lake Buyers." A lake in everyone's backyard. That might sound like a campaign speech, but relatively speaking, it's a reality in the new Medmont subdivision. The subdivision will contain four-acre lake and a five-acre park stocked with fish for fishing, swimming, and boating for people that live there. Forty-nine lots in the subdivision will have 100 feet of road frontage, and the streets in Medmont will be 50 feet wide and paved. Houses' exteriors in Medmont must be made of 75% brick or natural stone. That's the way they wanted it on September 17, 1956. I don't think this plan conforms to that. My second point is, I live at the bottom of that map right there, right off the bottom there. Been there for years. There's a cavern beside my house. It's been filled in. I know it's there because every time it rains, the water just pours out of there, and I had to go look for a lost cat there one time, which I found, by the way. Rumor is that this cavern runs from my property to the McVitty House, at least it did. It's filled in now at each end. It's also rumored that Lewis Gale hit this thing when they built Lewis Gale Hospital in the early '70s. I have an article from the Roanoke Times dated Sunday, November 7, 1971, during construction, and it states here that the target date for completion of this 320-bed, 10,000,000 six-story building is December 1972. An earlier target date of June 1972 was revised after unforeseen foundation problems delayed construction. So something happened. Something happened during the construction of Lewis Gale. So I would ask city council at this time to vote no against the current application en filed right now. We need to do a study to make sure we're not building on hologram here, because that's really low ground right there at the bottom of that map. And this plan, as you can see from our forefathers in 1956, is not what they wanted for Medmont. So thank you for your consideration. By the way, the landlock thing, there's a beautiful lot right down the street, right across from McDonald's, right beside Mike's Market. Be great for townhomes, man, I'm telling you. Now, they would bring 450,000 if you built on that. It's a beautiful lot. Anyway, thank you. God bless. Great evening.
John Parker.
I'm John Parker, and I live at Crowbridge, and Mr. Mayor and city council, good evening. I'd like to preface what I'm saying, that I'm not opposed to development. I'm a capitalist, and making money is good. The little bit of contact I have with Mr. Boone, he appeared to be a sincere individual. I don't think he's trying to hurt anybody. My objection is density. When we bought our homes in that subdivision, we didn't just buy houses, we bought a community. We bought a subdivision. It was, the density was light, and it was single-family homes. Now, you're being asked to retroactively change the rules. When I bought a house, they said it was, the city said it was, "single-family zoning." And we paid a premium for that single-family zoning. So now, they want you to go back and take that from us. I don't really think that's equitable. We have 48 homes in Medmont. They're proposed in 24 townhomes, which means with the stroke of a pen, they're increasing the density of our subdivision by 50%. I think that if they reevaluated and put something in there that occupied, that had less density, I don't think it'd have as much objection. Thank you.
Sarah Sink.
My name is Sarah Sink, and I have lived in Medmont Lake for 50 years, and it looks like I should have gotten to go first, not last, because of my age. But during all those years I've lived there, it's been a wonderful place to live, and just looking at these townhomes does not show you visually what our neighborhood looks like. You can't tell anything about the lake, which I'm going to talk about. You can't tell about the sweat equity my husband has put in for all those years to keep that property pristine. My biggest problem is about the liability of trespassers. This has been going on for years and years, and I was a teacher, so I like to be in control. So I always approached the people in a nice way and asked them if they were residents and so forth. Some of the things you would not believe that have happened. Teenagers come on foot across the creek, which is right beside my house, with their fishing tackle. They pass three no trespassing signs as they go, and then you go and ask them in a nice way. Some of them leave, others become confrontational. And by the way, they come across the creek from Roanoke City property, but the school, it's a county school, Hidden Valley Middle School. So that's a problem. The next thing, adults come in cars. They park at the end of the street. They walk in with their tackle boxes. They pass by the no trespassing sign. The latest thing is, we've become a babysitting service free. Parents are now dropping their children off at the end of the street. Elementary age and middle school, with their tackle boxes, they go out and they fish, which I blame the parents rather than the children. And when I asked the latest ones, they told me they were from apartments on Brandon Avenue or Lee Highway. Then the most recent thing, because of my age, my daughters tell me, "Do not approach these people. It's a danger to do that." Well, being a teacher, I'm a stubborn person, and I don't listen to them, so I go ahead and approach them. I came home, and there was a car parked in the cul-de-sac at the end of my street, and when I told the lady, she was on my dock and in my bench, she became confrontational to me, and actually, I felt threatened by her. So this is going to be a problem that is compounded by all these residents and all the people that are not going to know anything about our bylaws and rules. So just try to visualize more than what you see right there, if you would. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Stuart Clay Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you for letting me speak here this evening. My name is Clay Taylor. I live at 4226 Lake Drive in the adjoining neighborhood in the Greater Dyrally area. I work in commercial real estate, specialize in multifamily housing. I do want to clarify that I have no connection professionally to this project, and I'm speaking in my capacity as a member of the neighborhood and this greater community. First, I want to say I respect the opinions of my neighbors, but my observations do lead me to a different conclusion. My first observation is that the applicant has committed to a high quality of design and gone in above and beyond the minimum requirements to propose a project in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I understand that townhomes are different than what has been there, but I do think that we have a high-quality project in front of us. I believe they've taken the time to seriously consider neighborhood concerns and answer them as objectively as possible with real data, seeking to protect what is already there while working on a project that will add real value to the community, to that neighborhood. I think frankly, these are high-quality townhomes in keeping with other projects that this particular applicant is known for delivering within this community. But most importantly, I believe this project fulfills a meaningful purpose within our community. Simply put, we are in dire need of more housing for our community. I'm familiar with the multifamily side of the business, mainly apartments. Affordable housing, of course, is something that's most important, but also for-sale housing, specifically new construction for-sale housing. And this is particularly important because townhomes such as these provide a good option as prices are skyrocketing. A lot of young people, a lot of others, folks on fixed income, just cannot afford larger or single-family homes. Townhomes are a good alternative, and many people right now are struggling and saving for a down payment. So although there are plenty of vacant homes in the city of Roanoke, many of these are in disrepair, and it's important to remember that if someone's saving for a down payment and barely able to make that happen, they may or may not have money left over to provide for renovation. So a low-maintenance townhome is a really good option and important for those people. We really need this, and I can tell you that this is something that affects me personally. You know, as a landlord myself, I have tenants who I, you know, support and care for that would like to buy a house, and I see this in my business as well, as a real estate agent working on multifamily. We have high rents in the community, and we have a lot of people who are renting not by choice, but because they have to, because there's no housing available for them. So I ask you to support this project, and I can tell you, I don't just speak for myself. There are others who share my opinion who may just not be comfortable speaking tonight, but I felt it important to do so, and thank you for letting me speak.
That was the last speaker.
That's the last speaker? Okay. Thank you. As I close the public hearing...
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, if you're hearing that...
Have I been invited to speak as a person who didn't sign up ahead of time? I'm a neighborhood person. I...
Did he sign up?
He's saying he did not sign up.
I think he was late. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I came down from my, I had to go to the dentist's in Harrisonburg, and I made it under the march. I'm trying to keep the relationship. I'm being scared.
Basically, we're not, I'm not allowed to let that happen. I mean, you have to sign up.
Okay, I did raise my hand and ask, so thank you.
No, that's not the way we do it. I appreciate that, but you have to sign up in the time.
I'll, I'll, thank you.
All right. Let me say, as I close the public hearing and go to my colleagues for comments, I can appreciate all the time and effort that you all have done and the concerns you voiced tonight, and I recognize that because you love, you love your homes and you care for your community, so I appreciate that. And so now, I'm going to close the public hearing and then ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions or discussions, of course, that they'd like to make. All right, now, Starwrit to my right, just come right down the line. Starwrit, councilman.
Me and the new guy gets to start?
Yes, sir.
Boy!
What's going on? Years of experience.
Ladies and gentlemen, first thing I want to do is, as probably the oldest person up here, tell you that I remember when Medmont was formed, and I've had friends there. I know kids who've grown up there. I've traveled over there in the last week and gone through the entire neighborhood. This is a really difficult project for us to deal with because of you and your sincere feelings about your neighborhood and the length of time many of you have been there. And it's also an opportunity for us to try to do something that helps Roanoke. The challenge here is if every neighborhood in Roanoke decided they wanted to isolate themselves, which is not so much your intent, but your emotion and your feelings, we couldn't put anything anywhere. And the worst part is that our tax base is eroding, and that means your taxes are going to go up. And only by doing very well-placed developments by good developers are we going to be able to counter that and begin to get ourselves in better financial shape over the next decade or two. One of the challenges is we don't have any open industrial land of consequence left. Industry pays almost 50% of the taxes in Roanoke. There is not a neighborhood in this city that pays its way. When you want to talk about a fire truck, that's a quarter to a half-million-dollar truck coming off of Kegy. Now, I will tell you, you're going to have the equivalent of 26 feet. My street is 20 feet, and the street below me is 20 feet, and their car's parked on one side. And the Roanoke City firefighters have learned adequately to get up and down, but two cars can't pass at all. Somebody has to pull in. So you're not the only ones that have this kind of a challenge, and whenever you have an older city like Roanoke where you have established streets that can't be changed and homes that you all love, they may not ever be able to be made again like that. And I think one of our challenges is to try to make a decent decision that helps us move Roanoke forward, because I'm the last person that wants my taxes to go up. Shirley and I pay a fair amount in taxes, just like you do. And one of the ironies is, none of us pays any more than anybody else per capita. But the bottom line is, it's eroding, and we're troubled, and we're going to have a tremendous challenge. It's only projects like this that are going to allow us... I don't need signs right now, guys. That's rinky-dink. The whole bottom line here is trying to understand where you're coming from, for us to try to do the right thing. But the real challenge is, the challenge is, Medmont will not stay the same if everything stays the same. What you love about your neighborhood, what I love about my neighborhood, it's not going to be the same if we don't do some things to change. I happen to know, in this particular case, you've got a really good developer. I happen to know, in this particular case, you've got a really good developer. I know some developers who came to Roanoke during my economic development days at Dominion Bankshares, who did not have the city's best interest in mind. You know, Alexander is at least a Roanoke native. His father went to school, you know, in Roanoke as he did. And you want to be thankful that you've got somebody that cares. Now, he may not agree with you and clearly doesn't on some of the issues. But there are two things to remember. One is we're rezoning tonight. We have not approved the project. And I've already had extensive discussions with Mr. Boone. He's willing to talk about parking off the street and he's offered to make some other concessions available that might make this much more livable for you all and for us. But if we don't rezone the property, we never get to that particular part of the process. I would understand if every single one of you remain just as adamant as you are tonight and I appreciate that. David Harrison in particular has been great to help me understand. And Cutright and I worked together when I was at the Transportation Museum, so I already know, I don't want to get into battle with Jeff Cutright. But, but the bottom line is we have a huge responsibility, not only to you all, but to everybody in the city. And there are very few places where a quality project is going to be proposed. So I want to say, you know, that's the kind of problem I have trying to make a decision as a member of council, trying to represent you, but also the fifty thousand other people that are in this community that need the same thing you do. When you heard the first opportunity tonight for those apartments off of four sixty, that's an incredible opportunity for us. But that is, those don't go to the same quality of people that were going to buy what this project would provide. If you have a house, it's a four hundred thousand dollar investment, you're going to get good neighbors. What you don't want to do is wait for the next project that may not give you that quality of neighbors. So it's a real tough situation for me and my colleagues to try to deal with something like this because we know it affects you and quite frankly, it affects us because it's hard as the dickens to make decisions like this. So thank you for being here and for taking your time to help us understand your feelings and your thoughts. And I promise you that we'll try to do our very best as we try to think about the big picture and the Medmont picture. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you all for being here tonight. I really want to commend all the residents and Mr. Boone, Mr. Rosen, city planning staff, planning commission. So much work has gone into this from the initial idea to the investment in the community and the people who call Medmont home and Roanoke home. You know, Saturday, I did have the opportunity to meet with a lot of the people that live on Medmont Circle. I think, I don't know, you said forty-nine? That's more than I thought were there. But it was, it was a, it was a remarkable experience. It kind of reminded me of the neighborhood I grew up in, which was all single-family homes that all had an acre of land. When I go back to that neighborhood now, it doesn't look anything like it did when I grew up there. And I certainly would have loved, in fact, one of the hardest things I ever did was go back and see the house that I lived in deteriorating. But that's because that neighborhood changed because of development. A lot of commercial development was going in. A school was built right across the street from it and ended up purchasing all of that land. And, and we don't know what's going to happen. I don't see that happening with Medmont at all. You know, that's not the vision for that community and it's clear that people are invested. I know, I talked to at least one resident who lived there initially, then moved away and then moved back and God, karma, fate, whatever you call it, got to move back into the same house. So, so there's, there's a unique synergy that's happening there. Now, I think one of the, one of the things I've realized through this, and I equate this with what we, conversations I've had around the, the rezoning process. There, there are many of us who our daily work is this. It's looking at zoning, it's looking at planning, it's creating developments, it's, this is our, this is what we live and breathe. For many of us who are, who are residents just living in communities, this isn't our daily work. And so when something of this magnitude is shared, there's, there's kind of this leap factor. And I think some of us doing the work hope and maybe even expect that everyone will understand the leap that has been made from point A to point B, where in effect, there's a lot that has to happen in between. That was a compelling thing to me Saturday when I was meeting because, you know, I heard a variety of neighbors say, we love our solitude, we love our lake, we're concerned about trespassing, but we also want to welcome people here. There are deed restrictions in Medmont and I believe that these properties abut Medmont, so they wouldn't even be part of that deed restriction. So we're talking about, while it feels like the same neighborhood, it also is like a different part of the neighborhood because it's not within the Medmont deed restriction. So I don't know what that means. I don't know what it looks like to modify deed restrictions because one of the concerns expressed was, how do we let these neighbors know what those restrictions are? It's not that we want to be exclusive, but you know, we've bought into this. We've invested in this. And I think that's part of the tension and the personal liability that was mentioned. And while that isn't a zoning issue, it's an issue we need to be aware of in the broader scale of things because it's a concern for the people living in Medmont. I think there was some confusion about, and probably still is, about definitions like missing middle, affordable housing. That gets thrown around a lot. And that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. For someone who is currently homeless and is looking for a home, affordable housing is three or four hundred dollars rent per month. We don't have much of that housing in Roanoke, if any. And what we do have is substandard and I would dare say, not fit to live in. But it's difficult for us to get there because developers have to apply for low-income housing tax credits and they can set a percentage. One, one proposal that came to us was a desire to, to create, I don't remember how many units it was, but it was like a six-story apartment building. And eighty percent of those units would be low-income housing tax credit, which means they could set the rent lower for the appropriate number of people that need to be housed. And then the twenty percent could be at market value or higher. Some, a lot of cities are working with that and we're looking at that as well. But that's for people who are trying to move out of homelessness. There are two other populations that are growing significantly in Roanoke right now. Millennials, thirty to forty-five, Mr. Turner, I think alluded to that. I listened to his example at the planning commission. And then retirees who are fifty-five plus. I've talked to a number of retirees who don't want a large, single-family home. They want a smaller house to live in, a townhome or a patio home. And I've heard both of those proposed for this area. I serve as a chaplain at Hermitage, Roanoke, and on our property, we have six units, we have six townhomes that have twelve units in them and we have ten patio homes. So it's, it's a combined style. But those are all filled and they're always filled and there's a waiting list. So the millennials and the retirees are looking for houses and not necessarily single-family homes, but for smaller places that they can call home. And that's, that's something that we don't have enough of. You know, I'm sitting here, I'm torn like Bev because I personally would love to own a townhome right near Medmont. I probably wouldn't get to go to the lake, that's okay. But I think all of you are really awesome people. And that's to me, the magic of a neighborhood that we don't often get to experience. And so that's, that's where part of my tension is. So here are some thoughts and these, these, these emerge from some concerns that I heard on Saturday and over time. And I'll, and I'll try and keep these as brief as I can. We've heard a lot of issues related to, to the street. A couple of questions that I have, and I'll admit my frustration that I know we're just addressing zoning tonight and not approval of the project. I wish we could do that in reverse because I think we've heard a lot of neighbors here saying tonight, if this is approved, we would like to be part of the conversation. And I think that's really important. So whatever the result is tonight, that's what I would request. I don't know what that looks like from a planning perspective or a developer perspective, but I think there are healthy, healthy conversations happening here that we can build on. I think there's some good wisdom here that's collective that we could all benefit from in, in the review process. Pocket parking, you know, is there a way to incorporate pocket parking if, if this is approved? Is there a way to mediate or soften the curve? It's, it's a pretty severe curve coming down that hill. And I don't know in the process of reviewing the land there and in the development, if, if that, if there's a possibility to mediate or soften that curve, I think that's an important consideration. I would like to know, is there a way, you know, we're, we're really promoting sidewalks throughout the whole city and curb cuts and curves. Now, I don't know in the original deed with Medmont, if sidewalks were ever planned or curbs were ever planned, but I listened to several neighbors mention, one in particular, I think it was Ms. Sarah, that she's been on the twenty-year waiting list for curbs. That's a long time. And I, I told her, I said, well, I know some people that have been on the fifty-year waiting list. So, so some of that has to do with deferred projects and capital projects. But there were two things that emerged that I think I would love to see some dedicated effort to, for the Medmont neighbors. I would love to see a way to, to review the curbs and to strengthen the infrastructure in that neighborhood, to continue to make it safe. I would also like to see a little more effort put into the stormwater runoff and flooding issues because I don't believe those have been fully mitigated in Medmont. And I, that, that seems to be an overwhelming concern. So again, whatever the outcome tonight, those would be two asks that I have on behalf of those neighbors to make sure that they have input into what they're experiencing and that they can be part of the solution. It's important when you have a neighborhood that brings you solitude, to not feel like that's going to be interrupted. And so I would just say to, to Mr. Boone, I heard that loud and clear, and I think you've heard that loud and clear, to the degree that solitude can be sustained, density can be a concern. But depending on who purchases these properties, if these are retirees, that's awesome because they're going to be next to a neighborhood that's awesome and they're going to live in a smaller house. That's awesome. Even with families that may have children. You know, there's a way to protect the solitude of this neighborhood, but also build relationships with those potential new neighbors. And I, I definitely heard that spirit in these neighbors because they've been doing it for fifty years. And even when you have to deal with Ms. Sarah and her teacher discipline, she's nice about I just don't want to see the sidewalks built in, in a development and then they stop. I don't know, again, I don't know what the Medmont neighborhood needs, but I think it's important to find out what you all need and if there are ways that we can extend that and, and prioritize it, we need to do that. I have a little bit of concern about the density. Mr. Boone, you mentioned that, and again, I don't know anything about design and building. I was just in Europe and density is not, I mean, that's all over the place. You, you walk and you're, in the density of houses everywhere. But it's a whole different model in terms of transit and, and transportation. Cars are not centric in Europe like they are in the United States. And I wish we didn't have as many cars, frankly.
Yeah, Europe is far more multifamily than single-family.
It is. It's more multifamily, it's more based on, on mobility that's not reliant on cars. I really want to see us get there as a city, but I think, I think we're all aware of, of the challenges in that and that's kind of a long-term, big-picture thing. But I did want to ask you, because you, I think I heard you mention that this land could have supported more units. Can you talk a little bit about that and, and what, how you finally arrived? Because I know it was seventeen and then twenty-four. Can you talk a little bit about, it could have supported more units, but you kind of landed on this twenty-four?
Yes, Vice Mayor Cobb. We initially, of course, as the, the plan showed, we had seventeen lots and as, we worked closely with city professional staff as well as Mr. Crewe, Ballsor Associates and his colleagues, we looked at what's the, what's the right mix. And one of the ways that we could have gotten more lots on the, on, I guess, the left-hand side, if you will, coming down from Keggie, is where the stormwater management facility is. Actually, may I approach the, the concept plan?
Sure.
What you could have done as a developer is pulled, there's a lot of land back here down through here. You could have pulled and had roads and streets into this area or even say a half-circle or a half-moon and built more houses in through this way. But that didn't feel right to us. We also, when, so I, I sent two letters, as everybody here knows, and the second time I sent it, the person who owned this property called and asked me if I wanted to purchase his property. So as we worked with Ballsor Associates and city planning team and looked at where we could do, you can actually get one or two more units potentially in, I'll have to jump in that area. So as we looked at that and, and city planning, I'll have to say, said, we don't think that's a good idea. That's too much. And so Vice Mayor Cobb, I don't know if that answers your question, but we tried to minimize, you know, the density for us as, but make a viable project and one that makes sense and one that has a streetscape. This will have a streetscape when you come up Medmont or down from Keggie, you will see a streetscape here.
Well, and that's, that's part of what I, is really important to me, having been out there, is the continuance of that. So it seems seamless. And I know just that the appearance of that many townhomes doesn't feel seamless because it's a different kind of home in that area. But I think there are ways to, with work on the road and with work in the neighborhood to make that feel seamless, even though it's, it's essentially two neighborhoods right next to each other.
Correct.
And I appreciate that, that there's, there's some protection of this, this larger area because there's a lot of woodland back there, but I also know the grade is pretty significant. This doesn't show the, the landscape and the topography.
Correct.
And this is a pretty, pretty steep grade. So, you know, for the neighbors that live kind of down here at the bottom, right now they're looking up at a, a pasture essentially. And when that changes, or if that changes, they'll be looking at townhomes and maybe, maybe trees. So it's going to be a very, it's going to take some time to get used to that because that's a pretty abrupt change, even though it happens over time.
Yeah, absolutely understand.
So I think that's part of the grief or loss that, that neighbors may be feeling around that sense of solitude. I can't speak for them. But I'm just trying to identify some of the, the broader issues. So I think for me to support this moving forward to the project phase where there's additional study, I would need to have some assurances about the, the neighbors having some involvement in sharing knowledge and direction about, you know, that seamless flow, a softening of that curve, not on you, but, but a continuation of curbs and stormwater mitigation more broadly in the neighborhood to reduce flooding. And I think you're certainly doing your part in that.
Yeah, I think this really is a broader stormwater management facility.
I agree. I agree. But that's really more of my request to city staff to work with Medmont neighborhood. But that's really more of my request to city staff to work with Medmont neighborhood to address those issues because I think there can be a yes and here, which is what I always try and work toward, but I think we need to make some commitments to the neighborhood to feel like they're a little more involved in celebrating or supporting or potentially welcoming new neighbors.
We will do that. I mean, one of the things that I committed to planning, the planning commission, is that we'll have a staging area, which in construction lingo is just an area where construction workers can park, where you can put construction materials that need to be used on a job site. So we will create a staging area for the contractors. You know, we'll have onsite supervision. We'll have onsite personnel there every day ensuring that our team, our development team, are good neighbors. If there's a problem, they can call our company. Again, there'll be people there every day whose number-one priority is to have a safe and considerate work environment. Now, development is always going to be a little bit loud, a little bit dirty, and a little bit inconvenient, but that's the nature of development. That's the nature of progress.
So I would just say to that, you know, we're in the middle of taking down a big bridge right now.
Sure.
And every day I get to have conversations with neighbors who are happy about that, but not about the traffic and the other issues related to that. So I would suggest, and this is not just to you, but also to planning department, overcommunicate. Just overcommunicate. Make sure that people know that you're accessible to them, that there are regular updates, not just written, but meeting. I will tell you from personal experience, meeting under the trees by the lake is a good place to have a conversation. And so I would encourage that, and it's about meeting people where they are. And I think the more we communicate, the more we can answer questions, we can hear concerns, we can hear about modifications, especially as we get into this review stage, which may reveal some things to us that you don't know about now and others don't know about.
Absolutely.
So it's a discovery phase, but I just, I don't want to get three months down the road and hear that neighbors haven't been in communication or haven't felt like they've been communicated with. I think it's extraordinary, the level of commitment. It's not just Medmont. We've seen this with other neighborhood groups. But any time we're talking about progress, we also want to do everything we can to sustain the synergy and energy that already exists in a neighborhood and not detract from that.
Absolutely.
So I think they can coexist, but we've got to work really hard, harder than maybe we've ever worked on something before, to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Got anything else to say?
Certainly, Mayor, I would thank you, and not a whole lot because it has been a long evening, and I just appreciate everyone coming out. I certainly want to thank all of the folks who sent the emails to us to object to the project, and there were some who were in favor of it. I will say there were a few people that mentioned that we should go out to the property, and I will say that I did go out multiple times. I went out with Ms. Rosen and Mr. Boone, and then I went out with Ms. Sanchez Jones, my colleague on council, and then I went out with a member of your community, Juna Osborne, who lives in Dharley, who used to be on this council, and she insisted that she get in my car and ride me around in the neighborhood and to the lake. So I went through the entire neighborhood and to the lake, and so I do understand what you're saying, and I do see those perspectives. And my colleagues have said a lot. The only thing that comes to my mind was the density, and what I did do was I went a step further, and I went by the construction that you had done on Franklin and Avonham. It's seven units. Is it seven units?
It's seven and a half. Actually, we have a carriage house, and one of the first accessory dwelling units in the city was built in that project.
I rode by there, and I said for Juna, my colleague Ms. Sanchez Jones, to go with me, we actually had to park the car to get out and take a look at it because we could not believe that you got seven units there. They're very nicely done, and we actually had to park, get out, and count them, one, two, three, and it was actually seven, and it didn't appear that way. So I was glad that I took the time to do that. Now, I will say that there was a couple of concerns that were mentioned repeatedly about the wetlands, and I don't want to conflate that with stormwater runoff. And I'm sure that you're going to look at that. You said, I think I heard you, Mr. Rosen, mention that that would come after it's zoned, and you look at the extensive planning. I hope that we can because I know that's important to people, that's important to all of us who care about sustainability in our wetlands. I just don't know that that is the case, and we've not been able to verify that, so I'm glad that you're going to do that. So I just want to say I appreciate you taking the time to come and go over this project. Again, I will agree with Mr. Fitzpatrick and Vice Mayor that we hope that we will do a better job at communicating some of the pros and the cons to the community, and that includes our planning staff. I'm not sure, I'm not saying they didn't do a good job. I'm not sure that we could have done a better job at communicating that to, because a lot of the questions that came up could have been easily answered by staff, and they were not, or by someone from your staff, Mr. Boone. So I think we just have to do better because, you know, nobody is going to be pleased with a project they don't understand, and if they understand it and it turns out to be a good thing, maybe we can all agree or agree to disagree, but I think we have to do a better job with our communication, and I'm not preaching that to you. I'm talking about our staff as well, and this council will have to do a better job at communicating with our residents. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman White Boyd, may I mention one item? As far as the wetlands, if there are wetlands there, we're actually absolutely going to address them. This project was permitted two years ago for the eight single-family lots. They did not find wetlands at that time. We will have our own studies. Ballsor Associates has wetlands experts who will evaluate it, and I can assure you that we won't get a permit if there are wetlands down there.
And that's why, that was the only thing that I had started that came up beside the density, and I heard Mr. Rosen, he did mention that early on. I just wanted to acknowledge that because I heard that concern from a lot of the residents who contacted me directly and by email, and so I'm just glad that they were able to hear him address that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
I'll be very brief. First, I want to thank everybody who came out. If we don't have passionate folks in our neighborhoods, then we're not having a good city, so I really appreciate y'all coming out and making sure that your voices were heard. I do think that this is a relatively good development, and I think there are a lot of positive things that can happen to the community. So I want to thank you, Mr. Boone, and your staff and the city staff for working together to try and create a project that will meet those goals that we talked about in the 2040 Plan.
Thank you.
And I look forward to welcoming those new residents into the community.
Thank you.
I'm bringing up the rear. Right, well, I'm not going to take too much time, but I have to say, and I've said it, and I'm tired, I'm glad we're finally here because this has been overwhelming for me. I have slept it, I've eaten it. It has just worn me down. I'm being truthful. I'm a truthful person.
You're not alone.
And also, I have to go ahead and just say.
Everybody in this room.
I am on pretenzone, so bear with me, really. I've talked with both sides. I've heard both sides. I've went back and forth trying to find reasons why or why not. And one of the questions that the Vice Mayor asks, I have, and I want you to speak to it because I asked you about it and I read it in the application, was coming down the slope from Kegy, I believe, coming down to Medmont in that curve that all keep speaking of. Will you speak to that piece where you're putting in that bend?
Yes, that is certainly for safety, to widen the road, to enhance the traffic pattern at that point. That was part of, I have to give the city planning team credit. They brought that up. They worked with their colleagues in traffic, gave us recommendations on what it should be, as they did with the entire traffic plan that we have so far for our plan of development, which of course will be enhanced as we go through this permitting process. But so as far as what we are trying to do there, we're trying to open it up and widen that area to make it safer. I mean, if you want more specific, you know, technical data, Mr. Crewe can talk about that all night long, but no one wants to stay here all night long.
No, no, no. And that is part of where you shared with me about the sidewalks coming across, along with, I think, when I spoke with Mr. Rosen, he was telling me about the, I guess, the sewer drain where the water would go through so it will not have a lot of runoff.
No, that would be underground.
Go underground.
Yes.
And also, I see on your plaque up there, we were talking about on the lots, I think it's nine through 14, because I wrote all that down, which is in the corner there to the right. I asked you about that back there where you said you could have put some more. That would be where the yards would be for families if they so desire.
Correct. We wanted to leave that as open space.
So that's where the open space will be, but they would be drawn in property lines, so they would be not just open, but along the someone's property.
No, the units would own them, but there will be restrictions about what can be done there, you know, if anything can be built there, what can be placed there, that type of thing. But they will be open, and they'll be owned by the homeowners themselves.
And you have, although you're doing 17 on that side of the street, you have, I believe, four that's coming off of, I think you have Kegy?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
So you're entering it, I'm still looking here, I believe I've got it, but the entrance is actually still on Medmont.
The entrances are on Medmont. You know, I'm too old, so I can't jump in to show you with that.
Right, no problem, no, no. I was hoping a larger piece would have been up there, but that's okay.
But the reason we're doing that is so we don't have traffic emptying onto Kegy, which would not be allowed under city regulations. So we're doing a dedicated alley behind these four units, and there will be rear-entry garages with an alley, and so the homeowners would come in and out and just go right up to Kegy, you know, take a left or a right to go to 419 or 8% to catch the light.
Okay. And one of the things I did do, I was talking with an expert who's in planning, who's done it for almost 50 years, that was impressed by it and it brought it to my attention, was that you were using a high-grade vinyl, and he said, is that battened board?
Board and battened. It's a great design. It's very popular today. You have a siding and then what they call a battened strip, so it creates a rich texture against the house. It gives the house more depth than it would otherwise have, and very popular today, and you know, we're excited to propose it for Kegy Way.
And the cost that you're going to have for these, are they going to just be solely owner-occupied?
They're going to be for sale to the general public, absolutely.
Okay. And what is your price range?
Yeah, as we talked about earlier, the prices are still so volatile, we don't know. I mean, my guess is right now we're probably looking in the higher 300s, but 400, 450. I mean, some of the bigger ones with the finished basements could easily exceed $500,000, particularly if a homeowner desired to finish part or all of a walkout basement.
So you don't foresee vacancies just laying out there for a year to two years?
I sure hope not because I got a lot of money on this.
Yes. And the only other thing, and I have to just piggyback on what my colleagues have said, and I've said it for three years, and here comes the passion, here comes the pretenzone. I believe in community engagement, and I hold the staff responsible for that. We talk about it. We even went and won our eighth All-American City based on community engagement, yet we still fall short on that, and that's what I feel the pain from the neighbors here because they put the onus on the developer to come and talk, but the city sits on the side, working with the developer and not with the community. And I'm just like my colleagues. I hope if this passes that they will stay in touch. They would be the mediators between you and those residents, trying to adhere to those passions, their concerns. I feel the pain. I live in a nice neighborhood. I've seen changes come. I grew up with change, and change is not good. When one moves in a neighborhood, they want to be there pretty much for life, and they want to enjoy it. I'm looking for safety. I'm looking for harmony. They deserve that. They bought their homes there. They have been there this long, and whatever comes in your townhomes, I just want it to be good neighbors, not ones that give them heartburn or what have you. So I just say that to the city planning department. Put forth that effort. Don't isolate yourselves when they want to come and talk to you, even if they want to fuss about it. Open that door. Allow them to come in, not hide from them, but be willing to come forward. Be a workable department, working with both. We want the income. We need the new development, but also we still need these residents, and that's my passion for why I sit here until December the 31st. That's what I look for, and I fussed about that for three years. This is my fourth year still, saying community engagement, voices need to be heard. They need to be heard because they matter. So that's what I have to say.
I agree, Councilwoman Moon Reynolds. And may I share with you, and I'm not saying this because I work with them regularly, your team in the planning department was very active in trying to engage the community. They asked about community meetings over the winter as we were working on this project. The Greater Darley Neighborhood Association had been disbanded, and Catherine Gray helped me track down the prior president, and I finally was able to talk with him. You know, we've offered through to have community meetings. We work with the city, so I'll assure you that your planning team did a fantastic job of trying to communicate on this case.
I'm not saying that they didn't with you. I'm just saying for them to the neighbors, not you. When I looked at the observation for what they did, they put it in there, the developer or applicant, reach out, do the outreach. It doesn't say they're doing the outreach, and with your signs, they're so small, and that's maybe the standard, but unless I want to know what's going on in a community, it's almost like a little small yard sign, you have to park, you have to go read. So to me, even the dimensions were too small. If you're going to make things happen in a community, they need to know it's coming, not by the developer, but I think through the planning department. That's just me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let me be brief. I disagree with the thoughts of our planning department. I think they work hard. I think there are a lot of challenges they face, but when I'm down here, at least three days a week, I see them outgoing, making contact with people, and they got a lot of things they have to do. I mean, community engagement goes several different ways. I mean, you know, I've heard council can do a lot more with community engagement, but I just want to, I don't want to leave here tonight with people thinking our planning department is not doing what they have to do. And let me just say that I spent, I think, four, about five members of council went out to this site. Everybody went out, everybody went to this site, but that's a first, one of the first in a long time. I know that I went out with Councilman Rosen, and we kept riding around, and I almost said to the court, I got enough. I've seen enough. And he kept going. He wanted to show me every inch, road, parking, what it's going to do. I appreciate that. Appreciate the time that he spent on that. And so again, as I said earlier, I recognize your love and care for your communities, but we have to make these tough decisions, and I think that's, and I hope you understand that, and you've heard from my colleagues, I don't want to be redundant with that, and thank you all for the work you've done and the work that you can continue to do. So with that, Mary Crewe, we're ready to call a roll.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And your audience passes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
We're going to take a five-minute reset.
You go to ten fifty-five.
Okay, we got more speakers lined up. We'll be here till midnight.
I think C.C. went out today.
She seemed gone, too.
She went to the bathroom. Do you want me to bring the list up here? She should be right there.
You got an hour and a half to get left?
If they're all here. If they're all here.
If they're all here. I think they're here, though. I can see a lift and we'll lie there.
I don't think I'm gonna let the dogs wake me up at six o'clock.
You are a bad boy. You are. Look at all of them. Real men. Isn't it pretty obvious?
First, we're down to the hearing of citizens upon public matter. The city council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to the council. Madam Clerk, how many people did you have that signed up?
Nine.
Can you call them, in order that they signed up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
John Raphael Roche?
Good evening. My name's John Roach. I live at thirty-one twenty-five Stone Ridge Road, Southwest. I would like to address the overabundance of deer population within the city. I got this article, and many articles like it, where it's showing deer bedding in an alley, which just isn't right. In my neighborhood, deer walk around in the middle of the day, which is unnatural, because there's too much food competition, and that creates an unhealthy population. So the result is, it's unnatural, unhealthy, and there's an unrealistic expectation to think that this problem is gonna solve itself. The problem with the current solution that Roanoke has done is, they're actually using taxpayer money to do a deer culling program, which is not shooting enough deer at all, and it's costing taxpayers money. If you look, so what I propose that we do is, we open the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources Urban Archery Program, where hunters can keep the deer population down. DWR says hunters are the number one control mechanism available to us, and it costs zero dollars. So it costs zero, zero money. If you look at Fairfax County, Fairfax County does this program. Fairfax County has over one million people in the county. Somehow, they can do it, and they can do it safe, but somehow, we can't figure it out. I don't understand. I, I look at the figures from last year, for Fairfax County, sharpshooters and other things that they did, took out about a hundred, a little over a hundred deer, which is about what our culling program does. Private hunters took out ninety percent of the deer. They took, in twenty twenty-three, over twenty-four, they took out seven hundred and three deer, and the year prior to that, they took out six hundred and four. So on average, they were taking out over ninety percent of the deer taken out of Fairfax County. So we can do it, and the benefits is, is less deer collisions, less tick-borne disease, happier citizens, and a healthier deer population overall. So I highly recommend that next year, you institute an urban archery program within the city. And I stand by for any questions you may have.
Well, thank you, sir. We'll refer this to the city manager. One thing I want to comment is, is that we do, we, we, this year, we had the, dealt with the deer population, I think.
To somewhat.
To somewhat, but we, but we did in certain areas, certain areas, but it just never seemed like it stopped it. And, and I, but I agree. I mean, they're, they're being what I call domesticatized. They don't run no more. They look at you, they blow the horn, say, "What do you want?"
The solution is, is easy to contact DWR and say, "You want to be part of the program next year." That's all you have to do.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll talk through.
John, I'm down the hill from you, and they just stare at me.
But that, that is a concern that we've addressed, is dangerous, because they go across the street at night and whatever.
You gotta stop your job.
Yes, ma'am.
This has been called by, to my attention, by Councilman Volason, explained to me what, what deer culling is. And I had mentioned it to the chief, but this gentleman has given a better suggestion, because we would have to find more money to put in that budget. It was only forty thousand dollars. But thank you, sir.
And you serve, this is free. People go, "You can actually make money if you charge these hunters ten bucks." What about that?
All right. Mayor, we have it. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. And I've had some parents come and tell me that their child was saying, "They're trying to kill Bambi."
Oh, gosh. Oh, that's terrible.
Get ready for that. Get ready for that. Let me do it.
Yeah, Bambi laying on the side of the road.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Jan Keister?
That was real interesting, even though it didn't mention our skunk problems. But anyways, I'm Jan Keister of Marshall Avenue, Southwest, speaking on behalf of the Old Southwest Inc. Neighborhood Organization. Also, I work at the Legal Aid Society of Roanoke Valley, which helps over a thousand people each year with evictions and housing issues. You will be making a decision soon about the zoning amendments that were passed and then apparently sent back down to avoid a lawsuit. Old Southwest Inc. urges you to table these zoning amendments until January twenty twenty-seven. Our community believes further research from cities with similar changes is needed for informed decision-making. The proposed amendments, despite guidance from the American Planning Association, overlook Roanoke's unique zoning challenges and the fact that we already have a significant number of vacant properties. Once enacted, these changes are irreversible, so caution is crucial. Aimed at promoting equity in middle housing, these objectives, objectives have shown mixed results in other cities. I moved to Roanoke from Minneapolis, where similar zoning changes appear to have helped stabilize rental profit, rental prices. More recent studies indicate that this only applies to luxury apartments, and that the rest of the population saw rental increases. But comparing the Twin Cities with a population of over three million, a median household income of seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, and a projected population of increase of twelve percent over the next years is apples to pineapples compared to Roanoke's population of about a hundred thousand, a median household income under fifty thousand, and no minimal projected, no or minimal projected population growth. However, Minneapolis has reduced its population of living on the streets by almost thirty-six percent in just two years. It wasn't easy or cheap, and it isn't a zoning issue, but it's worth studying Minneapolis's efforts to see what similar steps we can take. Also, since council has expressed a need for more income, I can say, speaking as a professional grant writer, that you're leaving a lot of grant money on the table that could be claimed. But as usual, I digress. Given the most recent research, and with more on the way, Old Southwest Inc. urges the city council and planning commission to delay the zoning amendments. Let's use this time to gather robust data and community input to ensure zoning changes truly serve all residents' best interest. Wow, ten seconds to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alton Aiken?
Metropolis, Metropolis Parking, Premier Parking. They used to be two, two separate companies, and they merged together. They have caused havoc across the East Coast, I mean, across the whole Eastern United States. My grandson, he's got a minimum wage job, and somehow, they did him wrong, and they gave him an eighty-dollar ticket on, on their windshield. They got me involved. When we tried to call, we couldn't reach anybody. All the phone numbers they had, nobody answered the phone. The parking lots are, most of them are about ninety percent empty, especially around the science museum. You can't use that garage anymore, because it's all, what is it, permanent, I mean, people's already rented them out. There, I talked to people there, passing by, and they said, "It costs too much. They're charging too much." The lady finally called me back from Metropolis and said, "You have to have a smartphone to read their Q-bar symbols." But I don't have a smartphone. As far as I'm concerned, that's discrimination. I've already watched about six people get tickets on their windshield. But those are not the concerned areas that I'm really, really concerned about. This parking out here, y'all took away our, our parking, or whatever what it was, and put thirty-minute signs out front of our municipal building, where we address our government, where we pay our bills, where I have, I have V O E meetings. And they last a lot longer than thirty minutes. So far, that V O E meeting, I didn't get a ticket. I was lucky. But that's a disgrace, that our municipal building can't be accessed for an hour. And you turn it over to Metropolis, I watched them sit there and put two tickets on cars. Yes, Metropolis is giving the tickets on the car. Yes, sir, I talked to them. Metropolis Parking is giving the tickets on the cars. Okay? That's an outrage. We want our one-hour parking back. And you need to get Metop, Metropolis off our parking in front of this municipal building. You need to get them out of there. They don't need to be there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
If I get a ticket.
Thank you.
Mary Frazier?
Hi, hello, everyone. Long night. Thank you all for hearing me speak this, this late in the day. Before I start, or as I started, I want to say hello, and I want to say that if I could, I'd like to read a, an example of a drafted ceasefire resolution being forth for the conflict in Israel and Palestine. For everyone who hears this later, this is an example, not the actual ceasefire resolution. But before I read that, I'd like to say two things. One, we have another docu-series event happening on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, at the main library branch. It, it will be done way before ten P M. It'll be done before eight. So if you all would like to come to that, that's a great place to connect with community members and to learn more about the context of Israel and Palestine and what's happening there now. Six P M., main library branch, July twenty-fifth. And I'd like to spend time talking about some recent happenings in Gaza. In the last week, there have been four massacres by Israeli-launched missiles that are funded by the U.S. People die by the tens every day in Gaza because of all the violence that's going on. But these four have been distinct by the, just the sheer numbers of people who've been killed, people have been injured, the lack of medical care for people who are injured, there's no fuel, there's no medical supplies for them. And they all happened in areas where people were taking refuge. People were trying to find somewhere safe, or they've been forcibly displaced. One in particular, on July thirteenth, at least ninety people, nine-zero people died, and there, and over three hundred were injured in a, what was a designated safe zone. So this was a place that was supposed to be safe, and all these, these people, these innocent people were, were killed. And then the, the rescue workers who came to take the injured to the hospital were also targeted and killed. So these are U.S., this is bombs and missiles from our, our country that are being launched on these innocent people trying to find safety. And I'd like to, if I can, with the time I have left, read this resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire in Palestine and Israel. This is based on a ceasefire resolution that was from Harrisonburg City Council in Virginia, and reads as follows. Whereas all human life is precious, and the targeting of civilians, no matter their faith or ethnicity, is a violation of international humanitarian law. And whereas Palestine and Israel have already experienced tremendous loss of life, displacement, and violence, and hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk. Whereas the city of Roanoke, as the original home to the, may I continue?
Should I finish?
Go ahead, finish, please.
Thank you. Whereas the city of Roanoke, as the original home to members of the Tuttelo people, and as a city still seeking to ameliorate the consequences of a history of racist violence and separation, we are deeply affected by the ongoing violence in Palestine and Israel. And whereas the federal government holds immense diplomatic and appropriation powers to save Palestinian and Israeli lives, now therefore, therefore be it resolved that Roanoke City Council, on behalf of our community, implores our U.S. Congressional delegation, both in the Senate and House of Representatives, to join us in urging the Biden administration to, one, immediately call for an unconditional and permanent ceasefire to urgently, to urgently end the current violence, and, two, promptly send and facilitate the entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza, three, negotiate the immediate release of all hostages, and, four, stop arming Israeli forces until an international court of justice ruling is reached. arming Israeli forces until an international court of justice ruling is reached to prevent further risk of U.S. aiding and abetting a plausible genocide. And be it further resolved to say Roanoke values the justice and harmony that could exist in our diverse community, and advocates for the dignity and safety of all residents, regardless of religion, race, ethnicity, or nation of origin." I'll hold off on reading the rest. I want to be respectful of everyone's time, but thank you for listening. I really hope you all put this resolution on the agenda and vote to pass it. Thank you.
Are you all contacting the federal leaders?
Yes, we...
Klein, Warner, King, have you all shared this with them?
Yes, the ceasefire resolution? Or these calls for action?
Any and all.
The calls for action, yes, over and over again. For nine months, we have been calling on them to take action, and people are still being bombed.
But it's an issue we have no control over. You know that. You understand that.
I think that we all have a voice, though, and that at all levels of government, we need to use that voice to call for this to end, because this is our tax money going through it, and you all are a voice here in Roanoke City. And this impacts us and our Palestinian neighbors who live here, who have family who are dying. Over 80 family members from just two families who are Palestinian in Roanoke have died. That's eight-zero, this one's 100.
Okay. Thank you.
Victoria Wheeler?
Hello, hello. Thank you all for your time. My name is Victoria Wheeler, and I am here to speak with you all about something that is frankly much more urgent than property values, parking, or finding new excuses for some of the folks who left early to apparently call the cops on children. Israel and the United States are currently carrying out a genocide against Palestinians in Gaza. The current death toll since October 7th is at least 186,000 men, women, and children and counting. And this is deeply personal for me, as I am getting texts and calls from my friends and loved ones in Gaza every single day, because they are dying. Their children are dying. For those wondering why you should care here in Roanoke, I will give you three reasons. One, every one of us should care, because we are human. They are human. You should feel their suffering without being asked. Two, you should care, because you and I, we are all responsible for this. Every level of our government, from the top to the bottom, is supposed to be of, by, and for the people. Yet protests have erupted around the world, but especially across college campuses around the United States, including just down the road in Blacksburg. Virginia Tech's encampment was broken up by police, children, young kids, fucking college students, excuse my language, but they were arrested, because they are desperately screaming for this government, anyone in this government, to stop this genocide. You ask, Mayor, why Roanoke City Council should do anything? It is because every level of this government, everyone around the world, has to apply unilateral pressure to Israel and our government at the federal level to stop them, because they are not listening. If we are not able to tell our government no to genocide, we are not in control of our government. Period. Dot. I have skipped reasons, I apologize. And I'm going to finish, I have a minute, I got this. The last reason that you guys should care is because the powers that are indiscriminately slaughtering Palestinians in Gaza view people in this country as just as disposable. If you are poor, if you are black or brown, if you are queer, if you are disabled, if you are anyone who follows rules in this country rather than makes them, you are wholly and completely disposable, and I know this firsthand. My brother Christopher, an Iraq War veteran, okay, watched our brother David die on a hospital bed in Texas with his own eyes, and it destroyed him. My family has never recovered and will never recover. I see my broken family and our pain in every single slaughtered family in Palestine, and you should too. Especially my dear, sweet Faris, who is only 20 years old, and he watched Israeli snipers shoot his younger brother between the eyes while they were searching for food. I will stop, I'm so sorry. The point is, Roanoke has to be on board with this. Decent people everywhere have to be on board with ending this unilateral pressure. Free Palestine, and let Palestine free you. Thank you.
Jordan Kearns? Rafiq McNamara?
Hi, everyone. Most of you know me. My name's Rafiq McNamara. I'll introduce myself in a second for Fitzpatrick, but I want to try something, if you can indulge me. Try to put you in my shoes. Imagine if your significant other's whole extended family was in a concentrated place, a concentration camp, locked in, and they were systematically being terrorized, and tortured, and starved, and murdered for almost nine months, while you, every day, can see it on your phone. And what do you do? You go around, talk to people, say, "Hey, this is bad." You try to go to people in power. And just to let you know, Mayor Lee, I've went to D.C. There were weeks and months where every day I was calling the elected officials, multiple elected officials. It hurts. And so I'm sitting here, standing, I was standing back there, watching the local government operate, but in the back of my head, I'm like, genocide, genocide. That's how people that pay attention to what's going on in Gaza right now live their lives, because that's how you should live your life when a genocide is happening. So what can you guys do? Just think, if you were around during a horrible crime, and you had your little position of power, how would you use it? You decided, you're the ones that want to be there. Hopefully you do something. But my name's Rafiq. My wife is Palestinian from Gaza. She's one of the families that Mary Frazier talked about. She's lost 60 members of her family, her brother in the first week, and then her uncle and every woman and child in her uncle's family a couple months later, and then 40 members of her cousins in one bombing. And I don't know, nobody ever asks me when I tell them, like, "Why were there 40 people in one house?" Because what Israel has done is forced them to flee to smaller and smaller and smaller areas, and then they bomb it. It is shocking to the mind to think about. So there's a ceasefire resolution, but pay attention, and you'll do something. Talk to people. Learn about it. It's wrong. Thank you.
Warren Frye?
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I just want to take this time to share some of the voices that have been coming through email from Gaza. Hello, my name is Fahed. I live in Gaza. Since the 7th of October, we have been living every day in a terrifying and sad way. There have been many major shocks for my family, including the bombing of our house and the martyrdom of my brother. We are suffering a lot in this great war. It is a genocidal war that we are exposed to in Gaza. Every day, there is more bombing, death, and hunger. My family and I dream of being in complete peace. I have six brothers and one sister, my mother and father, and I lost my beloved brother, Abdul Hay. We live in a very difficult circumstance, including that we are not a rich family. We are a simple family, and we do not have any work because of the war. Also, there is my brother in northern Gaza, he, his wife, and his three children. They suffer from severe malnutrition and lack of basic things, including food, healthy water, and many necessary things. Our friend asked Fahed a simple question that we might ask any of our friends any day. "How are you doing today?" "I wish you well always," is his response. "I am not well. Believe me, we live in great pain. Our house was bombed, and my brother was martyred. We were displaced from our region to another region, and we were displaced again. My brother, his wife, and his children remained in northern Gaza. My brother, my other brother, they are suffering because of famine there. He has three children. My heart breaks for them. They are suffering. We all suffer. I don't want to lose another person from my family. I also have brothers with us. This is what I wish, for this war to end. We are very tired. I swear words cannot describe what we are going through." Thank you.
Akshaya Dusse? That was the last speaker.
That was the last person? Okay. All right, thank you all for coming to counsel tonight. There being no further business, said Paul, for coming forward to counsel, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Milwaukee, the Secret Service announced that there is enhanced security around the event hallways, correct?
That's right, the DHS Secretary, Alejandro Mayorkas, talked about that today in the briefs. Two reporters asked the White House Secret Service reports fall under the Department of Homeland Security. Mayorkas said that additional personnel and protective measures had been sent to the RNC. We didn't get the specifics on that, but there has clearly been a decision after what happened in Butler, Pennsylvania, to beef up security for events like this and certainly work with people involved in the campaign. Mayorkas said, for example, that protection has been added to President Biden, Vice President Harris, former President Trump as well. Why would a candidate do that? He also said, we'll be getting Secret Service protection now. So clearly, as I said, after the assassination of former President Trump, there is a concern about keeping this campaign safe going forward, and the Department of Homeland Security has taken steps to try to ensure.
Ryan, quickly, in an unrelated legal matter, Donald Trump did score a political victory today when Judge Cannon dismissed the classified documents case against him. What did she hope?
Well, I would also call it a legal victory. In fact, I would call it a rather significant legal victory. What Judge Cannon ruled was that this case was going to be tossed out. She said that Secretary Counselor Jack Smith, that his appointment violates the Constitution. She said only the Congress of the President has the authority to appoint Smith.
All right, thank you so much, I'm sorry to cut you off, but we do have to take a break. You are listening to special coverage of the Republican National Convention from NPR News.
With heat advisories for most areas east of the Blue Ridge Tuesday, here is your radio IT for tax. Some sunshine today, also isolated showers and storms, potentially with a stronger storm of two, very hot and humid, that rise from eighty-eight to a hundred and two for Frederickburg. Heat index values well into the triple digits as you move east of the Blue Ridge. This is listener supported public radio, Radio IT, online at radioit.org.
Hi, this is Jackson Plaid, and I'm glad you're on a new way to enjoy some of your favorite NPR shows. It's called NPR Plus. NPR Plus allows you to listen to over twenty-four of NPR's most popular podcasts, completely sponsor free, with early access and exclusive content from shows like Can It Money? Fresh Air, Late Days on October, and more. And if you haven't signed up for NPR Plus, it is donation support Radio IT. Go to radioit.org to learn more. Here are the terms of live special coverage of the Republican National Convention in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And joining me now is Senior White House Correspondent Tamara T. Tam, hello. Hello, Phil. You are both in the convention hall, but you have also been watching a bit of counter programming this evening. President Biden sat down with NBC's Lester Holt for a one-on-one interview. This interview was scheduled before the assassination attempt against Donald Trump in Butler, Pennsylvania. This was supposed to be part of Biden's effort to salvage his own candidacy and support among Democrats. Biden also spoke last night in an Oval Office address with a message of unity and calling to turn down the political rhetoric. Did that message continue in tonight's interview? Well, it was this topic of tonight's interview that's for sure. Holt asked President Biden about some of his own rhetoric on the campaign script, referring to former President Trump as a threat to democracy. And also in a private meeting, saying that he needed to put the bullseye on Trump. Biden, in response to questions about that, said that that term was a mistake, certainly in light of what has happened. Though, he did say that what he meant by that was that he just needed to put more of a focus, we want it Democrats, put more of a focus on Trump, and less of a focus on his own problems and their own worries about his problems. And Biden, just stated that the idea of continuing to talk about these concerns about a second Trump term, even in light of the desire to have the rhetoric turned down, here's what he said.
How do you talk about the threat to democracy, if you're here? My president said to me, like he says, can you just not say anything, you're going to say something? Look, I, 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 I'm not engaged in that rhetoric. My, my, my only reason is that rhetoric talks about being bloodbath to the losers.
Yeah, if he loses, and Biden also then listed other things that Trump had said, talking about cowboys, or also when, when, other examples, the Republicans paying the heat of charges, for instance, for January sixth, people who stormed the Capitol, but Trump often refers to them as hostages, rather than people who've been convicted of a crime. I mean, part of the initial motivation for the White House to do this interview was to cause a pressure campaign on Joe Biden from within the party to get out of the presidential race following a rather disastrous debate performance. What did Joe Biden, I can only imagine he was asked about that, it's easy, and what was his response? Yeah, in fact, he was asked about it, and I will say that what had been feeling like there was momentum building among the Democrats to try to push Biden out, what happened on Saturday, and the fact that now the RNC is happening, and the fact that members of Congress are either here or at home in their district, has taken the pressure off of Biden, at least for now. He was asked by Holt in a number of different places, and Biden said, no, I am not getting out, I am absolutely not getting out. He said the race is essentially neck and neck, that the only thing is going to be difficult. And then Holt tried asking this.
Who do you listen to on deep, personal issues, like the decisions whether to stay in the race or not? Me? I'm really small time. Can I be, I, I, I am, I'm a, I'm a true, I'm a true, I'm a, I'm a true, my man, my man, my man, my man, yeah.
And then of course he went on to talk about his record, but Democrats who are worried about Biden bringing the whole ticket down, bringing down the House and the Senate, they are not particularly persuaded by his argument that his record has been good, but then again, this really does seem to be on ice if he's pronounced. But Jim, there it does seem to be an effect of the assassination attempt on Donald Trump, in that it has been good for Joe Biden. Like, it doesn't seem like there's any appetite within the Democratic Party right now to continue that fight, and the longer they wait, the less likely it is that Joe Biden would get out of the race. Oh, I think Biden's ticking on it, and also, go ahead, because the fox is ticking on it, and also because Biden, I mean, like, that's such as the ultimate five, which is, who are you listening to? My son. And he is telling himself that he should stay in, and that he's going to win. He believes he's going to win no matter what, elected Democrats, and governors in other states. I think that the campaigns are moving in two different directions. Trump is extremely confident, his aides are extremely confident, and the choice of J.D. Vance means that they are really, they are really going for a big excitement election here. They are not trying to win over, you know, like, pushy Republicans who gave up on Trump eight years ago in the suburbs. They are just trying to find more MAGA. And Biden, on the other hand, is running like he's losing. And his campaign is running like he's losing, in fact, because he is at this moment in the polls. And they are, they are seeing this as a campaign of interest, persuading individuals one by one in swing areas of the key states in the upper Midwest, in those blue all states. The Biden campaign had a very short term. Tell me this one, the Biden campaign had a short term pause on campaigning in the immediate aftermath of the assassination attempt, but that is slowly turning back to the campaign. Where do you go from here? Right, and I'm sitting in an arena where the campaign is very much going on on the Republican side. President Biden just landed in Las Vegas, Nevada, where he will be. Sam, I hate to interrupt you, but I think we need to go back to the convention hall, where we are just supposed to hear from the head of the Teamsters, Sean O'Brien, one of the top leader leaders in the country. And the first time a head of the Teamsters has ever addressed a Republican National Committee, the labor movement, of course, generally a strong ally of the Democratic Party.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Sean O'Brien, General President of the International Brotherhood of Teamsters. I'd like to give my speech from the greatest state in Massachusetts, Massachusetts, the past what's up. First, I want to thank the hard-working Teamsters and union members here in Milwaukee to play vital roles in the building and operations of this convention. I also want to thank President Donald Trump for opening the RNC doors to the Teamsters Union and inviting me to speak before you tonight. I travel all across this country and meet with my members every week. You know what I see? An American worker being taken for granted. Workers being sold out to big banks, big tech, corporates and the elites. And I'm not the only one who sees this. Every day families see it. The American people aren't stupid, they know the system is broken. We all know how Washington is run. Working people have no chance of winning this fight. That's why I'm here today. Because I refuse to keep doing the same things my predecessors did. Today, today the Teamsters are here to say, we are not beholden to anyone or any party. We will create an agenda and work with a bipartisan coalition, ready to accomplish something real for the American workers. And I don't care about getting criticized. It's an honor to be the first Teamster in our one-hundred-and-twenty-one-year history to address the Republican National Convention. Several months ago, I asked the RNC and the DNC for the opportunity to speak. To be frank, when President Trump invited me to speak at this convention, there was political unrest on the left and on the right. Talk to the ladies. Anti-union groups demanded the president rescind his invitation. The left called me a traitor. And this is precisely why it's so important for me to be here today. Think about this, think about this. The Teamsters are doing something correct, but they are screaming both parties, think I shouldn't be on this stage. President Trump had the backbone to open the doors to this Republican convention, and that's unprecedented. No other, nor any in the race, would have invited the Teamsters into this arena. Now, you can have whatever opinion you want, but one thing is clear. President Trump is a candidate who is not afraid of hearing some news, loud and often critical voices. And I think we all can agree, whether people like him or they don't like him, and like him what happened to him on Saturday, he has proven to be one Trump S.O.B. Now, when I won, the presidency of the Teamsters in a national election, two and a half years ago, we started reaching across the aisle. In the past, the Teamsters have endorsed GOP candidates, including Nixon, Reagan, and George H.W. Bush. But over the last forty years, the Republican Party has railed against strong relationships with organized labor. There are some of the party's fans and asset opposition to labor unions. There's too much change. And I want to be clear, at the end of the day, the Teamsters are not interested if you have a G, R, or an I next to your name. We want to know one thing, what are you doing to help American workers? As an negotiator, I know that no window or door should ever be firmly shut. In my administration, the Teamsters reached out to eight Republican senators who stood up for railroad teachers over a fight for paid shift wages. Josh Hawley was one of them. We started talking. Senator Hawley changed his position on national rights to work. Then we started walking. Senator Hawley walked a Teamster's pick-a-line in St. Louis and a USW pick-a-line in Winston, Missouri. More than that, I want to recognize Senator Hawley for his direct, relentless, and pointed questions of corporate talking heads, lawyers, CEOs, and apologists. He has shown, he is not willing to accept their charging of working people talkable. I know from a career in negotiating that you get nowhere by planning your fist on a table. The first step is to listen. The Teamsters and the GOP may not have been listening, but a growing group has shown the courage to sit down and to share a point of view that aren't funded by big money think tanks. Senators like J.D. Vance, Roger Marter, and Representatives Nicole Mallory-Tarkey, Mike Lawler, and Brian Stichcater are among elected officials who truly care about working people. And this group is expanding and is putting fear into those who have monopolized our very broken system in America today. There are far too many people on both sides of the aisle still caught up in knee-jerk reactions to unions, who subscribe to the same highest cloud trap that unions destroy American companies. Hit the moment to consider United Political Service, which is a large private sector logistics company, and it's been unionized for more than one hundred years. More than three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand Teamsters make it run. We work for good middle-class wages, quality healthcare, and secure pensions. There are work rules that ensure fairness and due process for both sides. UPS is the most efficient package delivery company in the world. But let's not forget that UPS doesn't provide these great wages and benefits on the time of the time. UPS does it because the Teamsters fight for all three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of us. You know, corporates hate when working people join together to form unions. But for a century, major employers have waged a war against labor by forming corporate unions of their own. We need to call the Chamber of Commerce and the Business Roundtable what they are. They are unions of big business. And here's another fact. Against gigantic multinational corporations, an individual worker has zero power. It's only when Americans stand together, democratic unions, that we win real improvements on wages, benefits, and working conditions. Companies like Amazon are bigger than most national economies. Amazon is valued over two trillion dollars. That makes it the fourth largest economy in the world. What is sickening is that Amazon had, has abandoned any national allegiance. Amazon's sole focus is on lighting its own parks. Remember, elites have no bodies, elites have no nations. Their loyalty is to the ballot seat and the stock price at the expense of the American worker. In my office in Washington, DC, I could see the United States Capitol from my window. I see well-intentioned people arrive in Washington and get eaten up by an unforgiving citizen. The responsibility to average Americans takes a fast leap. The adjusters now become survivors. Fundraisers after fundraisers, corporate consultants hedge every initiative. The hills sprawl with life, sponsors from government jobs to corporate jobs and back again. I think we can all agree, DC is a pretty treacherous area. Most legislation is never meant to go anywhere, and it's all cost. But in America, cost isn't cheap. It's very expensive, and it comes at the cost of our own country. Working people know our system is broken. The elites are not laboring on behalf of workers. There is a political caste system that prevents citizens from accessing their representatives to hold them accountable. For a moment in time, working people in America were seen as essential. Sadly, it took a global pandemic of political and corporate elites to notice this fact. But ask yourself this question. Since the end of the pandemic, when was the last time you heard major news outlets regularly refer to workers as a scandal? You have the men and women who provide work service.
This is live special coverage of the Republican National Convention. On the next Fresh Air, Julianne Niggafer, talented herself as character actress, who's appeared in dozens of films and TV series, from Alan McBeal in Boardwalk Empire to August O'Neil's County, A Mayor of Easttown, where she earned many awards. She stars in a new film, Scenic Planet, Jane. That's special, a recent feature on Radio IT, where she is.
With heat advisories for most areas east of the Blue Ridge Tuesday, here is your radio IT for tax. Some sunshine today, also isolated showers and storms, potentially with a stronger storm of two, very hot and humid, that rise from eighty-eight to a hundred and two for Frederickburg. Heat index values well into the triple digits as you move east of the Blue Ridge. This is listener supported public radio, Radio IT, online at radioit.org.
This is live special coverage of the Republican National Convention in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, where you are listening to Teamsters Chief Sean O'Brien.
The both sides of Congress to seal their butts up. We need straight calls that put American workers first. It needs to be easier for companies to remain in America. We need legal protections that make it safer for workers to get a contract. We must stop corporations from abandoning local unions to inflate their bottom line. We need meaningful bankruptcy reforms that end corporate bosses' firetard companies like Yellow Drake, with the intent of driving them into bedwashes and feasting on their remains. The courts leave workers begging for some, as birds care predators. Labor law must be reformed. American folks are unions, but can never get a union contract. Companies fire workers who try to join unions and hide behind stupid laws that are meant to protect working people but are manipulated to benefit corporations. This is economic terrorism at its best, and individuals cannot withstand such an assault. A fired worker cannot afford corporate delays, and these greedy employers know it. There are no part of companies for the companies, only the workers. We need corporate welfare reforms. Under our current system, massive companies like Amazon, Uber, Lyft, and Walmart have zero responsibility for the workers they employ. These companies offer no real health insurance, no retirement benefits, no pay leave, relying on underfunded public systems. And who puts the bill? The individual taxpayer. The biggest recipients of welfare in this country are corporations, and this is real corruption. We must put workers first. What could be more important for the security of our nation than a long-term investment in the American worker? In two thousand and twenty-one, Teamsters nationwide elect me to fight for us, and that's precisely what I'm doing. Something is wrong in this country, and we need to say it out loud. I will always speak for America and the American worker, both union and non-union. I challenge each and every one of you, and especially my friends on the Democratic side, to embrace cooperation, to truly collaborate, to achieve meaningful and productive change, to ensure we make this great nation, in this world, the biggest, fastest, and strongest nation in the entire world. I love this country, the Teamsters love this country. Our one-point-three-million members move America, on the road, in the courts, on the rail, and in the air. And at the end of the day, if the powers that be stop me from raising my voice on behalf of American workers, I will not have one single regret. I still carry my commercial driver's license, I still have my place in the Union's seniority. You'll find me bashing bosses riding a tractor trailer, delivering equipment to Shawnee and her house, because I have the protection of a union contract that gives me the freedom to speak my mind and to fight like hell. God bless the greatest nations, thank you very much.
That was Teamsters Head Sean O'Brien, the headline speaker, and the first night at the Republican National Convention. NPR correspondent Franco Orjoniz is there at the convention hall, who is listening in on Sean O'Brien's speech. And Franco, it seems like the Republican Party is trying to send a message by selecting a labor leader to be their headline address.
Yeah, that's for sure. I mean, I think this is going to be one of the speeches that's going to be most talked about tomorrow, I can assure you. President Biden and the Biden campaign were certainly listening to that speech, and it's going to be.